For eleven fourteen to twenty twenty five, because we seem to have some need for additional clarification on bills twenty two, two thirty eight and two twenty three D dash zero zero one.
If that moves in.
Oh, I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any questions, discussions? Erin, you okay back there?
Oh, this is not this is not here.
Okay, I'll call for vote. All those in favor of the motion of deferring item decision twenty four eleven four.
Yes.
Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Are you guys having trouble back there hearing us?
Yeah.
Okay, we do have a little microphone we're gonna share, so we'll try to do that. I'll try to talk really loud here. Put the table. Okay, this time we begin with public comment. Jeremiah?
Yeah, and just a quick note before we get started, because we have so many people in the room and people in the hallway that are waiting for people to leave, some of the people in the hallway have signed up for public comment. For them to be able to come into the room, people would need to unfortunately leave. So we kindly request that if you speak, if you could leave the room in order to allow the door to the door folks to let other people in, so that we don't go over the fire capacity. So thank you very much for your assistance with that as we try to, you know, follow the law with all of that, so. Yeah, I believe they have counted the number of people in the room because there are people standing and such. So I'm told that we're at capacity and they will do their best to try to keep us at that. So thank you for your cooperation with that. I'm gonna be announcing folks three at a time, so we don't have to wait as people are coming up. So I'll announce three of you, so the first and first can be up there, but then the couple of you can be on deck and ready to go to save us all a little bit of time, okay? If you know somebody's in the hall and I've called their name and they're in that group of three, please maybe try to help and get them in here. And thank you again, this is this is we'll we'll do this as orderly as we are able. So the first three are Chris Criswell, Steve Abbott, and Chris Johnson.
Hi, my name is Chris Criswell. I am not in the neighborhood of Rock Remen, but I do have concern about closing this branch in addition to the possibility that you may be closing other branches. I am reading from the U S Department of Health and Human Services, a release from May third, twenty twenty three. The new Surgeon General Advisory raises alarm about the devastating impact of the epidemic of loneliness and isolation in the United States. Today, the Surgeon General, Dr. Vivek Murphy, released a new Surgeon General Advisory calling attention to the public health crisis of loneliness, isolation, and the lack of connection in this country. Even before the onset of the COVID nineteen pandemic, approximately half of all U S adults reported experiencing measurable levels of loneliness. Disconnection fundamentally affects our mental, physical, and societal health. In fact, loneliness and isolation increase the risk of individuals to develop mental health challenges in their lives, and lacking connection can increase the risk of premature death to levels comparable to smoking daily. The Surgeon General lays out a framework for that includes six pillars. Five of those six pillars basically say we need to increase the the ease and the availability for people to connect to one another. My concern as a citizen of Colorado Springs is that we are robbing people of the opportunity to not only, you know, borrow books at the library, but to connect with other people, and it's very important. Let me tell you a little bit about my own experience.
You have one minute left.
When I grew up, I had no connection in my family, and so I didn't learn social. When I went to school, I had I I didn't know how to connect with other people my age. It was not until I turned sixteen and had access to a car that I actually joined a literacy program so that I could teach other people to read. But at sixteen, it was the first time in my life that I felt connected to the human race. And so I am begging you to understand that this is more than just a library. This is a meeting place where this neighborhood can get together and they can connect with one another, and this is very important to the livelihood of people and what is going on in their lives and their personal experiences. And I would ask you to revote on this issue tonight. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming to support us. My name is Steve Abbott, and I love the library. I was born here in Colorado Springs, and I've used the Pike's Peak Library District for over fifty years, nineteen of which as an employee of Pike's Peak Library District, the last decade as the manager of the Rock Remen Library. Despite being the oldest and longest-serving PPLD library manager with an exemplary career, I suddenly and suspiciously suspiciously was fired for a very disputable cause on May second. This is just prior to the announcement that the Rock Remen Library would be closed. It would take longer to explain my dismissal than I have time to speak, but I would be happy to discuss in detail the circumstances behind this to anyone that is interested. Being a part of Pike's Peak Library District for so long has allowed me the opportunity to hear many comments from patrons describing the district over the years. Words and phrases such as wonderful, educational, magical, even the occasional, it's the best use of my tax money. However, in the past few years, under the current leadership, I have heard words from the community members that I never thought I would hear describing the district. These statements have shifted to include words like ridiculous, deceitful, even shady to describe many of the recent actions of the library. It is a shame that an institution that I was so proud to work for has become known by so many as a poor place to work with seemingly seemingly little concern over the patrons that it reportedly serves. A community of over thirty thousand people has lost its library, community center, and safe gathering place for no logical reason. I ask why? People no longer have the same trust in the Pike's Peak Library District, and that is something I never believed I would hear. Do you want this to be your legacy, a legacy of distrust, chaos, and suspicion? You have the opportunity to stop this.
You have one minute.
Please consider the options that have been presented this evening. I still love the library and its mission. I look forward to positive changes in the future because I hate to think my library that I love so much is ridiculous, deceitful, and shady. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chris Johnson, and I'm a tenured veteran of the Finance and Accounting Office of a local medium-sized business where I currently serve as the CFO. First, I want to make sure you guys know that in the few places where my analysis required assumptions to be made, I attempted to err on the side of the board's stated positions in public statements. You guys had a hundred and forty-nine page board packet to deal with for tonight. I was able to focus just on pages six through twelve. So on page six of your board packet is your summary financial report. Shows actual revenues as of ten thirty-one as forty-two million, three hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and forty-nine, approximately two point seven million above what was projected in the budget. On the other side, your actual expenses show thirty million, seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight. This leaves you with twelve million, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars in excess as of the end of October. Now, the year's not over. You're going to have to spend money over the next two months. I divided your actual expenses by ten in order to determine an average monthly spend of three million, seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars. Figure that number for both November and December, and you're looking at an end-of-year operating surplus of six million, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars, assuming no additional revenue. I'm struck by the fact that out of a budget of five million, five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars in capital outlay, only one million, sixty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-five has actually been spent so far this year. That leaves a difference of four million, five hundred and five thousand and sixty-one. We need a catchy term for this number. Why don't we call it deferred maintenance? Why haven't you done any more of this maintenance this year? With the six million, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollar surplus that you are on target for, you could fund every dollar of that budgeted capital outlay and still have a surplus at the end of the year in the amount of one million, seven hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two. Based on a resolution set for passage this evening, two million, eighty-six thousand, six hundred and six is being refunded to taxpayers as a result of the various mechanisms of taper. Once we factor that in, you are looking at a
One minute.
It's we'll see, a deficit of three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four. Okay, but wait, remember when I assumed no additional revenue? I bring good news. You did. Your budget expects another one million, twelve thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five for intergovernmental payments revenues of which you have realized zero. Based on your work meeting this afternoon, it sounds like those E-rate payments come in as they are spent in order to, you know, work with the grant. That makes perfect sense. But once this revenue comes in, you're gonna be sitting at an end-of-year surplus of six hundred and forty-four thousand and forty-one dollars. This means you could pay the Rock Remen lease and utilities upfront using twenty twenty-four dollars and still bank nearly four hundred thousand into the reserve fund or towards an expansion out east. You don't have a budget problem. You aren't making tough decisions. You're just closing a library that this community has spent a month begging you to leave for us. And just so no one can accuse me of only looking at the past, your OAR for twenty twenty-five includes four hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-one in non-personnel operating expenses. If the person who's next would like to cut me off, I will I will go. In the same budget only anticipates five hundred thousand dollars in interest, just like in twenty twenty-four, and then you've realized over almost a million dollars more in interest revenue on your financial, didn't that? Like, the money is there.
Our next three, and I'll apologize in advance if I mispronounce anybody's name. Peggy Hartman.
I'm in the hall if anyone wants to go over the path.
Certain. I'm sorry, Peggy Hartman, Kara Farhad, and Pat Webb are the next three, please. Thank you.
Thank you for having us. I'm Peggy Hartman, and I want to start off that when I grew up, we had a saying in our family, in our town, in my state, that if it was a problem and mommy money could solve it, it wasn't a problem. You get cancer, money doesn't do you any good. And I just want to say, since it's always been about money, that's what we've heard from you. I think that also is not the issue. I'm bringing today, I know everybody's heard all these facts. I'm asking you to look at what you've heard and see if in any way you are willing to reconsider and change a couple of votes over to help us. This library means a lot to everyone. I'm just kind of saying, I'm coming from the heart on it because you've heard facts, I've heard facts. I think that if you are not as tight on it when you first started out on, I would love to have somebody else reverse and change and come over to it. I really think that the best people come in open-minded, and I've not felt that from this group at all. And I'm just saying that I think a trait that I've seen and I've hired people on, if they bring you a problem and they give me a solution or start to help, I hire those people. It's not just shutting it down. There is no solution behind that. And so I just want to say that for the data that you've heard, I'm tired of that. I know it all. I just think that it doesn't support what you are saying. After that, I'm just kind of saying, thank you for everything and honoring, and I did write a letter to all of you, which I'll just leave to read personally. Thank you.
They're finding Sarah, I think, in the hallway. Everybody, please use the microphone. I'm told that folks in the back cannot hear, so if you could talk in the mic, that would be lovely. Thank you. Where's Sarah? Sarah, I'm sorry, Kara Fahad or Farhad, I cannot read. I think they're finding her. Oh, you're here? Okay, you can be after that. Is that okay?
Good afternoon, Madam President, members of the trustees. I am Pat Webb. I am the current treasurer of the Rock Remen Friends. I am a charter member of the Friends. I was at the opening of Rock Remen thirty-five years ago the other day. It opened on Veterans Day. Reverend Hathley spoke. The sign of a diminishing society is certainly the closing of a library. How can you do that? I'm not gonna go into all the things everybody else is gonna say about they use it for their kids and everything. The library has been a good part of my life for thirty-five years. I've spent a lot of time there. Rock Remen currently, Rock Remen Friends currently have over twelve thousand dollars in their treasury. We were not asked to participate or told any facts or anything about what we could do to keep this library open. We were just told that it was in that report and maybe it would happen, and we're the go-getters. Why weren't we included in all of this and all of the planning? For some of our money. What I don't understand, and I'm not gonna repeat what everybody else is going to say, is something is happening in PPLD. I don't know what it is, but I don't like it. And I've watched the staff not only diminish, but the atmosphere has been terrible now for quite a while. We were told recently, we being the Friends of of Rock Remen, and we have always supported every library brand. We send them checks, we go to their programs, et cetera, et cetera. Isn't just Rock Remen that we spend our money and our time and effort on? We were told that we are no longer allowed to spend money on anything except.
Pardon? You have one minute left.
Except the staff. And I said, wait a minute, we always do the staff. Friday, we're giving them a breakfast. We give them birthday cards with a Starbucks card in it. We've always been very generous to the staff. And I said at that particular meeting, which the manager of Rock, temporary manager of Rock Remen was at, I said, do you mean if the teddy bear's arm breaks off in the children's department and there's no budget money, that we can't replace the teddy bear? That's correct. What? Why can't we? That's why we work. That's why we raise money and we work hard and we have a lot of money. But I don't know what's going on that we can't do that. So I think that the whole system currently needs to be reviewed, not just closing libraries, but how you're operating what you have. Thank you for your time. I'll submit my consent.
No. This one? Well, mine is now Farhad.
Yeah, leaning to.
A little bit closer. Yeah, okay.
And I used to manage huge amounts of engineers, hundred and twenty-one engineers. So the organization, a large organization. I'm not here to talk about statistics that everybody covered or talk about budget that you know better than I do. I'm here, first of all, I want to say we need your support. I'm here to talk about human element of what's going on right now. To my humble opinion, closing the library is a big deal. It's not just some casual things going on. And in addition to that, within the library, we lost, we very competent managers in Rock Remen Library. Mister Steve Abbott got fired, as he said it himself before. I want to know why. And whatever the reason was, hopefully he would reverse your decision. A man who worked for your library for twenty years, all of a sudden, fifty, some odd years, I'm assuming he is, somebody come to you and say, oops, sorry, you don't have a job. How else that the person has a family, household, a house, mortgage, children? You can just eliminate the job for a person that has been there honorably for ten years, manager of Rock Remen at least. But in his own speech, he said twenty years he's been here. And to my humble opinion again, is the fiduciary responsibility of governing body to, even if the person is not qualified, which in this case is not the fact, you would provide support for them, you would provide to to explain why.
You have one minute left.
Okay, and so just to go further, in that library alone, you lost Steve Abbott, Shannon Miller, Laura London, and these are all three of them. One of them wanted to be a professor. The other one, I don't know what he's doing, but the all three of them are very competent. And besides all these, library is a place that people, young people, to come, be in a safe environment, and to have a chance to journey from Charles Dickens to Duncan. I mean, where else do you go to have such opportunity? And plus, even World War Two was lost because they lost brain power. Had it not been for Einstein and Oppenheimer, now this this country might not have even won a war. So you have to, this is my request.
Your time's up.
I just want two requests, if I may.
You need to ask Board President.
May I?
Quickly.
Uh-huh. I want Mister Abbott's job considered to to diversify, so he would have the job. I also want, if it is possible, Steve, I mean, Shannon Miller and Laura, the other one, to give an opportunity to come back. You know, having a qualified people is very, very important.
Thank you. Our next three are Natalie Becker, Joe Helga, and Michelle Hafner.
Hopefully, this is working. Can you hear me? No.
Pretty close.
Be really close. Okay, good evening. Yeah, yeah, good evening. Okay, okay, that's fine. Okay, good evening, Board of Trustees. Thank you for the opportunity today to voice my thoughts to you. My name is Natalie Becker, and I live near the Rock Remen Library. It's probably very clear to you all by now how much we love the library and what it means to our community. I especially love Rock Remen Library as a community center to share my artwork, to be connected to other artists, and that's something very special to me. We don't want to create an us versus them situation. I know that you made a decision, but it's sometimes it's good to relook at things with an open mind. The people that have been part of this effort to save Rock Remen Library have PhDs, hold master's degrees, and many other degrees, and come from a variety of professional backgrounds. We want to work together with you. We want to pool our talents and ingenuity to make something wonderful happen, to keep our beloved thirty-five-year-old library open. When I was getting my graduate degree in community and regional planning, we talked about ways to handle community challenges. A library closure is one of those situations where special care should be given. Based on my educational background in classes, the board should, in my opinion, should discuss with the community stakeholders about a potential closure when this space is such a vital part of our neighborhood. In my opinion, when a final decision is reached at a retreat, which it kind of seems like it was, without public discussion or input, then the board is not meeting the spirit of the Sunshine Act in Colorado. The public is supposed to be part of that decision-making process rather than simply a bystander. The Pike's Peak Library District power structure shows that citizens are above the board. In this case, we want to say, guys, we can do this. We can find the money together. Just in closing, I want to thank Mike Barnett for spending time with me over the last couple of weeks teaching me about the library budget. He offered thoughts about ways to help fund the library, and I'm happy to share them with you. He always showed great respect for all of you in our discussions, just so you know that. We're trying to reach our, we're trying to reach out tonight and say that we don't need to live in doom and gloom mindset with our library. Just listening to Chris, there's good news out there. We can find a way to have a win-win solution. Please open your hearts and your minds to all the facts and data that we're providing to you tonight. And please revote to keep the library open for another year. Thank you.
Good evening, trustees. My name is Joe Pelka. I'm the president of the South Face Community Association. I'm representing two hundred and thirty-three homes that are near Rock Remen. In addition, like many of you here, I have served as an appointee of city council. Many years ago, I served on what was called the Public Safety Sales Tax Oversight Commission, and we reported to the city council and provided oversight on the use of that money, which was in the millions. I have been using the library at Rock Remen for twenty-eight years, and four generations of my family have used it. I'm a little concerned. I'd like to talk about your legacy. Trustees Taylor and English, we thank you for your support. We thank you for being candid when this. And we thank you for when you were so candid when you said the process went too quickly. We look forward to working with you in the future, and your legacy will best be described with a few simple words. You did not drink the Kool-Aid. For the others that did drink the Kool-Aid, I thank you for identifying the one of the most important matters in this city and for identifying that closing libraries are the third rail of local politics. Not only did you idea it, yet touch it, and I bet it was shocking. Think about what your legacy is gonna be. Madam President, you're leaving soon. Thank you for your many years of service. But in leaving, you'll be closing down the first library in decades, not providing a replacement. Not only that, you're dropping a hot potato in your replacement. You're setting them up for failure. Finally, in closing, I ask you one question. How many emails or letters have you gotten from the public saying that they agree with you and they'd love to see the Rock Remen Library closed? Have any? I request most strongly that before the end of this meeting, that there be a revote on the closing of Rock Remen. There's a lot of data that's gonna be presented, and I think if you look at it maybe in a little more spirit of cooperation, you just might want to decide you need to change things. I would like you to do that before this meeting ends. Finally, we would like to work with you as allies. Please keep our library for at least one more year. Please don't treat us as adversaries. We want to work with you in the future, not just to keep our library, but for the good of the entire district. Thank you.
We know that you are in in concert with all the comments that are being made, but every time we clap, it's taking time, and we will end up being here till nine o'clock or later, so I. Keep it down. Thank you.
My name's Michelle Hafner, and as Joe just mentioned, we are here to work with you, the PPLD Board of Trustees. We agree with you on many points, the importance of libraries, the need to maintain a budget, the need to expand facilities in the east as our populations grow in that area. I believe there is a way to do all of this without cutting back existing access. Today, we are going to talk briefly. Today, we are going to talk briefly about why Rock Rymon specifically is needed, bring attention to PPLD vision and core values, address the budget constraints, and suggest paths forward that will allow us to thrive without cutting off service to a large swath of population who have come to depend on it. Rock Rymon Library is needed. Please understand that it is not just the east growing. The northwest population is also growing. New neighborhoods are being developed, new apartment building complexes, and new infill housing is being built. We are becoming more and more dense despite not expanding our footprint. The Rock Rymon Library is located in a densely populated area within walking distance to several large apartment complexes, schools, and retirement and elderly care facilities. The library is a resource that has been in place for over thirty-five years, and many people have come to depend on it. As stated by others, this location is so much more than a library to us. It's a community center with strong connections to young mothers, school-aged children, working adults, and the elderly. Yes, there is a gaping hole east of powers that needs access to library facilities. However, removing the Rock Rymon location will cut out a huge swath of population that does not have overlapping accessibility by other libraries and open up a new gaping hole on the west side. What is within walking or biking distance would expand into over twenty-minute drive each way, a drive that involves crossing I-25 and Academy Boulevard, both heavy traffic areas. And that's assuming that a person has the ability to comfortably drive that distance, as others have stated. There is a population, a large population of people who cannot drive that far. The elderly, the youth, the disabled. You would be cutting out a resource that many people have come to rely on. Don't cut off your nose to spite your face. It is obvious that Rock Rymon is a thriving, efficient, heavily-used location. So now, it is time to look at the root of the problem: budget. I would argue that there are multiple paths forward without affecting existing access or community.
Our next three will be Wendy Lowenberg, Jennifer Walker, and Veronica Baker.
Hello, Board. With one look at the Pike's Peak Library West Side, it is stunningly obvious what constitutes the fundamental core values and the guiding vision for the library district. The first word of the guiding vision of Pike's Peak Library District is access. The first word of values of the Pike's Peak Library District is access. And the first word of the strategic plan of the Pike's Peak Library District is access. What else is repeated over and over again? Community, community connections, cultivating spaces for strong communities, bringing people together. Removing access to a large population flies in the face of these very values and vision. Do we need to expand our access? Absolutely. But not at the expense of restricting others' access that have been in place for over thirty-five years, not at the expense of a highly efficient, heavily-used location. So what is the best way to honor these values and visions while staying in budget? I'd like you to think about the outpouring of support and passion regarding the closure of the Rock Rymon Library. Why do you think that is? I would argue that it is because Rock Rymon excels at these very values and vision. We are a community hub, a place to meet friends and neighbors, a place you can walk or bike to. We are the epitome of community and access that larger centralized buildings simply cannot provide. I would argue that we need fewer, more expensive, to build and maintain libraries, often in the industrial and not the residential areas, and we need more strip mall access, community-centered locations. We need more Rock Rymons, not fewer. The barrier of entry is low for these locations. We could open two strip mall locations on the east side for less than one million of that four hun- four hundred, I'm sorry, forty-two million dollar budget, waiting to build a huge tens-of-million central library out there will take, will both take too long and still leave a huge population who has to drive out of their own small communities to reach a large centralized location. You've taken the community out of the library.
Jennifer Walker. Um, I've been a resident of the Rock Rymon area, the west side area, for twenty-four years. And I am a business owner of two different businesses. And I'm a mom of boys, always, four boys, from ages six to twenty. We have all grown up at the Rock Rymon Library. I want to thank, um, my friends for reading the first couple pages of my speech, because it went way over time. And so I propose we reevaluate our spending on fancy programs, fencing, remodeling, and solar-powered cell chargers, and put each item on the budget to the litmus test of the core PPLD values and vision. Is this item increasing access? Is it helping to build community? If not, that is what should be on the chopping block, not closing a location. And maybe we don't need a large chopping block at all. There are numerous ways to expand the budget that could allow for expanding access without taking it away from other areas. Mill levies, re-implementing a late fee which raised over five hundred thousand dollars a year, easily enough for another small location out east. Donations, and of course, reallocating funds based on values and vision, not vanity projects. The justification for closing just doesn't add up. Given the reasoning for closing Rock Rymon was budgetary, I have to state the obvious. The purported savings just don't add up, especially considering the cost to the community. Closing Rock Rymon this year would not save two hundred and forty thousand dollars out of budget. With our donations and the owner's reduced lease offer, the savings is now around two hundred thousand dollars. But wait. Even that amount would further be reduced with the cost to close the facility, move all the books, and location equipment to other library. The amount would be reduced again by the increased cost to other facilities when they have to take on the load of the heavily-used Rock Rymon Library traffic. Are we really saving anything in the end? Two hundred thousand dollars in a forty-two million dollar budget? How is that going to get us where we need to be? You say it's just a start in the right direction. Well, what is going to happen to get the rest of the way? Are you going to close more libraries? That goes against the very values and vision you are trusted to uphold. We are simply asking you to stick with what you had publicly promised. No closure decisions until at least 2025. That was stated in the August board minutes. A 2025 budget that was approved September twenty-seventh, just three weeks before closing the Rock Rymon Library, that included Rock Rymon Library lease. We need one more year to really think about things, to really think things through without the drastic rush and rash decision to close a location. We need one year, two hundred thousand dollars, to give us breathing room to see if we can find a way to meet all of the community needs within our budgetary means. Things have changed since the October decision not to renew the lease. You have borne witness to the outpouring of support and love for this location. The owner has offered to reduce the lease. The owner has offered to cover any flood damage that may occur. The owner has offered a one-year lease instead of a ten, five, or four. It's time to take these changes into consideration and renew the lease for one more year. It is enough to say that we could bring it back in the future. Things are very easily destroyed and not so easily built. We need libraries to stay open, and we need to stay in budget. We can get there by reevaluating our expenditures based on the Pike's Peak Library District core values, access, and community. We are asking for just one year extension to fully evaluate all of the options. I cannot see any reasonable justification that a one-time, less-than-two-hundred-thousand-dollar savings is so vital and urgent that it can't wait one year, especially when those funds were already allocated in the budget. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Veronica Baker. I am a Rock Rymon resident. I am a library patron. I am a mother. I'm a registered CNA. And I'm here to talk to you today about a community that's been really overlooked in this swift decision to close our library. And that community is those living with disabilities. You see, I have four children, and my older two, Jackson and Trevor, are on the autism spectrum. And when we chose our neighborhood, we did so intentionally. We wanted them to have access to all the most important community spots. We wanted them to be able to walk to get haircuts, go to Safeway, go to the post office, and of course, go to the local public library. And we've really worked with them to walk safely in our neighborhood and across the street, wait for the crosswalk, look both ways for cars. And they are so close to being independent. We can fade back, and we can see them getting closer and closer. And with this decision to close the Rock Rymon Library, that's really taken a step back. Now my boys will have to walk forty-five minutes to the closest public bus stop. And that's just to get to the bus stop. That's not to get to the library. That's another forty-plus-minute ride to Library Twenty-One C. And you see, our local library provided so much inclusion for my boys. They were able to participate in pause for reading, the summer reading program, teen cooking class. We were really looking forward to this Christmas break because they always have a huge poster with stickers that you can put and create a big picture. And we always took way more stickers than we were supposed to, but that was part of the fun. And now, that's a big hole for them. They've lost that part of that inclusion. And we're, we're wondering why. So the fallout from this decision, it's been devastating. It's been shattering. And it's been a quick decision that has left us with questions. How can these vulnerable individuals who can't drive, can't just hop in a car, go across town due to health, disability, or age access their closest public library when there isn't even a reasonably close public bus stop? This closure creates serious barriers for patrons and could be a potential violation for the Americans with Disabilities Act and the Colorado Civil Rights. We are asking for a year to figure out how we can sort this out. How can we do right by this population? By closing this so quickly, you have really created barriers for this community that already has so much to overcome. So we are asking you to look at revoting and giving us a year to figure this out. We need to do right by this community.
Our three are Jessica Levers, Audrey Ross, and Beth Carlson. Jessica Levers, Audrey Ross, Beth Carlson.
Hello, I'm Dr. Jessica Levers. We are a community group with one sole purpose today. We are committed to our neighborhood library branches because we see how valuable these are in each unique and diverse community. Libraries are a gathering place. They're a place of learning. They're a place for our elderly, for our children, and for our lonely. They are not simply a warehouse of books. It is noteworthy that citizens of PPLD sat atop the organizational chart in the twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three-year budgets, above even the Board of Trustees. Even more noteworthy is that in the twenty-twenty-four budget, this organizational chart is absent. I fear that the PPLD is forgetting the heart and soul of the library. It is about the people who work in them and their relationships with the patrons of the library. Please don't lose sight of why you are here and all of the communities that you serve. The PPLD's strategic plan identifies the core values of access, service, freedom, accountability, creativity, and community. Accountability is defined, we responsibly steward resources with integrity and transparent practices. Our community has contacted every member of the Board of Trustees and the leadership, and this value has not been upheld. Scott Taylor has been the lone board member to send replies that are thoughtful, and we thank him for them. The silence from the rest of the board and the leadership has been definite and troubling. Furthermore, creativity as a core value is defined as fostering imagination and resolving problems in new ways. Our community has tried every angle possible to engage with the Board of Trustees and leadership. We are offering creative solutions to the financial problems that have been identified with our library. We are desperately wanting to be allies with the PPLD and finding a way to maintain our neighborhood library branches. Community states simply, we bring people together. And this one, I would argue, in some ways, has been upheld. And this group is a testament to the community, how communities should work. The closure of Rock Rymon has brought us together. We have organized. We have knocked on doors. We've met new neighbors, and we've engaged with city government. Now we come to you and ask you to please come together with us in this moment to do the next right thing, to be a part of our community. Because we hear you loud and clear that you are underfunded and you need a lifeboat to be more sustainable. Please let us help you. Let, harness all of the energy and creativity in this room to find a better solution. Because when all is said and done, it is you all who will leave a legacy on this city. History has its eyes on you. I cannot imagine that you want to leave a legacy of ill will and not serving the communities, a legacy of missed opportunities or regret. I thank you for your time, and I hope that you will join us.
Hi there. My name is Audrey Ross. I'm eleven years old. I love Rock Rymon Library and everything about it. It is my special place, and not only I enjoy it. Many middle schoolers in the area, I go there on the way home from school. My little sister likes to play in the kids' area, and so do a lot of kids. Teens use Rock Rymon as a safe space to hang out. People love reading there, no matter what age they are. And closing it will be devastating to this community. This community needs the library. The kids and teens in this community need Rock Rymon Library, and so do I. If it closes, we, we won't forget it. It's not just a thing that's gonna go away. We must keep it open. It's the board's job to do what is best for the library district. And I can tell you, the closing of Rock Rymon Library is the exact opposite of that. We need this library. I've been to almost every library in the district, and I love Rock Rymon Library more than any other one. Rock Rymon Library has a really big tween section from ages nine to twelve, and a lot of other engaging activities for children that I've spent a lot of time at, and I love Rock Rymon and really want it to stay open. We all do. I think, I think that the board's decision needs to be changed. We need to at least take more time to think about how much Rock Rymon means to this community, which is a lot. Rock Rymon Library is important and amazing, and it deserves more thought. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Beth Carlson, and I live in northwest Colorado Springs. When my family moved to the Springs in two thousand and two, Rock Rymon Library became a home away from home for me and my children. This lovely little library was the meeting place for my mom's club group when my children were young, offering us a place to create community with our children and encourage their love of reading. Rock Rymon Library provided a welcoming environment that gave our children a myriad of opportunities to learn and grow, from storytimes to educational programs to craft workshops. Young mothers in our area still appreciate the community this library offers for them and their children. One suggestion is that our community simply move to Library Twenty-One C or East Library for services. However, neither Library Twenty-One C nor East can effectively absorb our northwest population. From my volunteer shift at Library Twenty-One C on Wednesday afternoons just today, I know firsthand that the children's section of Library Twenty-One C is already quite crowded most days. And the assertion that parents can just take their children to Twenty-One C or East for activities fails to recognize that participation in activities is limited, and the activities offered are often full without adding our Rock Rymon Library population into the mix. I know as a mom that promising children they will get to do something only to arrive and discover there is no space that sets children, as well as frustrates and discourages parents from driving to a location that is out of their way and trying again. The end result is fewer visits to the library from parents in our community, which is a real tragedy for our children. I would also note, as Audrey just noted, that Rock Rymon Library serves as a safe place for kids. When my girls miss the bus from Eagleville Middle School, they walk to the library to wait until I could arrive and pick them up. In fact, my youngest, who is an avid reader, admitted that she sometimes did this on purpose. I know my girls are not the only ones who are happy to have a. I know my girls are not the only ones who are happy to have a safe place to go after school. Shutting the doors on Rockrimin Library means our community loses a safe place for our children. Our community had no notice of the proposed closure and no opportunity to work with this board to develop an alternative solution. Based on budget and finance information developed by other members, the rationale given for our Rockrimin Library closure does not make sense. Closing this library will not solve the alleged budgetary shortfall, as this closure will only result in a small amount of the savings needed apparently by the library district to offset deferred costs. However, it will take away our community center and our children's safe place. The community has the will to keep Rockrimin Library open, and the landlord does too. I hope as members of the PPL Board of Trustees, you do as well. And I am sure that you want to be remembered as a board that successfully managed to keep libraries open, not one that wasn't able to do so. I ask that you postpone closure of Rockrimin Library for one year. During the time, this board can work with city council members, county commissioners, and members of our community as a team to resolve any issues that exist budgetary or financial, so that all PPL libraries, PPLD libraries can remain open. Thank you for your consideration.
Our next three speakers are Jessica Williams, Craig Williams, and Audrey Roger.
I promised I wouldn't dance, but like to dance. Okay, hi. We can, we can all laugh a little bit, because we are all people. Hi, my name is Jessica Williams. I am a almost twenty-year resident here in Colorado Springs. My first job was at the Rockrimin Branch Library when we moved here. I was so excited to come to Colorado from Texas. And I remember dancing in the parking lot when it snowed for the first time, and everybody felt that was really, like I just had no idea what was coming. That's okay. So, I am up here, because I want you guys to know what we've been up to. I, in the last month, what all has taken place, you may not be aware actually of all the hours, hours and hours of time that we have spent. One of my friends said, you know, I haven't done laundry in a few weeks. I'm like, yeah, me either, and I haven't gone grocery shopping, and I haven't really done much else. You know why? Because we're out there trying to save this library. My poor kids are so tired of hearing me talk about it, but it's, it's, I'm like, you know what, we just, sometimes things just are worth fighting for. So just in the last month, we have had four consecutive Saturday mornings where our group has come together at a local elementary school. We gathered signatures from a petition now that has over twelve hundred people who have said, hey, you don't want libraries in Colorado Springs closing. And I really do appreciate those of you who are paying attention. It really does mean a lot. Thank you. Creating an accurate and thorough website, we created the Save Rockrimin Library website, which has had thousands of views. Um, we've involved the community, we've organized active volunteers, we've had people manning tables outside Rockrimin. Uh, everyone who comes by, many didn't even know that it was closing. No idea. Like, oh yeah, friends, like in a couple of weeks. What? Yes, here's a flyer, help us out. Um, they've gone door to door. You, Mr. Salt, came door to door to my house not too long ago when you were running for the D twenty seat, and I did vote for you, and I, you know, it makes me sad to see this being the reality of that decision. Uh, we attended county and city meetings with significant turnout November twelfth and nineteenth. Okay, awesome, thank you. Uh, we've, you've gotten all of our emails, right? We've dialogued with the press. And now we're standing before you again, because we are determined. We have shown that we are committed and we are capable. We have rearranged our schedules. You guys, we sat in, uh, commissioners yesterday for five hours? Five hours. I had a doctor's appointment to go to that I said, hey, I actually can't go to this because I don't even care if you charge me, because I need to be here. This is that important. We personally have rearranged flights because we had a funeral to go to, to make sure that we could come to the meeting. But this has, this has been so personal to us, okay? We've missed days of work, we've jumped through whatever hoops have come our way to show you. What possibly more could we do? Why does all this effort and passion and enthusiasm seem to be falling on deaf ears? Like, I bought neon, I'm probably never gonna wear it again, but I went to the Christmas store and bought a whole bunch of it. Please, thank you. Please allow us to do something together to change the course of this sinking ship. It is too precious to not give everything we can to keep it afloat. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Craig Williams. I'm an eighteen-year resident of the Northwest Side Town. Um, I currently lead a business intelligence team for a local nonprofit. So my approach was I was gonna take my skill set, carve through the finances, the master plan, and really take it in a, an objective look on how this decision was made. So I took that approach, I surprisingly did not find a supportive narrative to support the closing of the library. In fact, I found within that, that the overwhelming narrative um, within the master plan was actually in contrary, in contrast to the actual decision. So there was actually a big disconnect between the dominant narrative of the master plan and the conclusions that were made seemingly as a bolt-on to closing the library. So I'm asking, we extend the lease at a minimum of one year to allow for the community to actively engage alongside PPLD uh, and allow for proper time to reevaluate the allocation of the funds. That to me, this is seeming more and more like it's an allocation, a study versus an availability of funds issue. So I think the narrative of what is the problem can really be unwound and discussed a little more. So here are some of my key points from the master plan. Um, I, I actually, the consultant's evaluations had its holes like any other type of evaluation of this kind of magnitude. But it was effective in establishing the normalizing of metrics to do an effective comparison of branches across that have different levels of utilization size and pre-tunes of activity. So with it, within that, I was appreciative of the, of that effort. But what was interesting to me was what did the, the, the narrative of those metrics that were in my conclusion of that. So here are a few of them. Uh, Rockrimin has a, was very high on the utilization. Busyness index was four, which is in the top quadrant. Uh, the facility condition index was very high, very low in comparison to some of the other metrics. Um, within the deferred maintenance aspect, that was a big focus of the master plan. Uh, when you, when you really roll that out of what the total ten-year projected cost? One minute, okay. Uh, Rockrimin was well, uh, was less than a percent. Over seventy percent of these dollars were allocated to this three libraries, uh, Twenty-One C, East Library, Penrose, and that, that totaled over fifteen of the twenty million of the total deferred ten-year cost. And that's what was surprising to me. So within that, within that fifteen million, there are seven point three million, which I would say are very much up to subjective conclusions, I don't know if they're needed. So they are allocated towards interior space enhancements, exterior improvements, and historical preservation. So some of these are hard, some of these are hard improvements that need to, that like addressing structural repairs, but a large portion are also addressing soft improvements, like preserving historical charm, enhancing curb appeal, and restoring interior historical features. Those are subjective. Those, and then my main point is these are subjective when weighing the closing of the other libraries. There is room in the budget to modify and prevent even the consideration of closing facilities. Um, so, uh, uh, once again, I ask you to just reevaluate, have a, have, have, allow time for the costs allocated to these two, three branches to be reevaluated where a cost optimization effort might allow for the, the removal of the consideration. That's just my, my thoughts. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Audrey Rogers, and I am fourteen years old. And for my whole life, I have lived within two miles of Rockrimin Library. Every day, I have been fortunate enough to have the opportunity to either walk or bike to the library. Rockrimin Library has been a key part of my life, and it means so much to me and my family. I am incredibly thankful that I have a library so close and accessible to me. By closing the Rockrimin Library, we will be removing libraries almost completely as an option for some people, especially people like me who cannot drive. Bookmobiles and kiosks are not an adequate replacement for libraries. Rockrimin Library is a necessary part of our community, and nothing can replace it. It is our duty as a community to keep libraries as an accessible option for all people. Please consider revoting so that we can keep Rockrimin Library and all libraries accessible for all people. Thank you.
Our next three are Leah, Leah Benford, Svetlana Nadelman or Nudelman, and Kristen Parks. Leah Benford, Svetlana Nudelman, and Kristen Parks.
Hello. Hello. My name is Svetlana Nudelman, and I'm a president for the last thirty years. And I'm a yoga instructor. I've been teaching yoga and a volunteer for many years in this library. Most of my students, older people, they don't have any means to go to fancy studios. It's not affordable anymore, you know, when you live on restricted income. And they will not drive to any other libraries for yoga, and it's so, so important for them. I cannot tell how much gratitude I have from them and absolutely amazing feedbacks. It's so, so important, not only for physical health, but their mental health, for their soul. When COVID was here, everybody locked at home, and everybody suffered from isolation and frustration and depression. And only because of our library who came up with a brilliant solution to offer Zoom yoga. We had Zoom classes, three, oh, three times per week. I've been teaching through whole COVID periods, three times per week. And people told me it's the best ever happened to them during the COVID. It was a silver lining, silver lining, yes. Now I'm back teaching yoga in library. If you never took my classes, please. Every Monday, you will like it, I promise. We'll change for them all. It's very important for our health, and not only physical, but mental health. And like everybody else, okay, like everybody else, I pray you to revisit your decision and vote to keep library open for one more year. Thank you.
My name is Kristen Parks, and I have lived in Northwest Colorado Springs for fifteen years. My husband and I have three children who all attend Westside Schools. I'm a PTA officer, an intervention tutor, and substitute teacher at Trailblazer Elementary School just down the street from the Rockrimin Branch. I'm here today to ask you to please take the standing offer from the landlord of a discounted one-year lease, so we have time to work together to come up with a proactive solution for our community. You have listened, uh, you have listed financial issues as your motivating factor for closing. But it has been, as has been shown today, this just doesn't make any sense. There are many different options that align with your facility's master plan, including staying in the current lease. And we are asking you today to please choose one of those options instead of closing. In this rapidly growing county, we should be looking at how to expand and invest in existing libraries, not diminish them. You claim our area can be serviced by two other libraries because they're within six miles. For those privileged enough to be able to drive, it takes on average twenty minutes to get to either of these locations without traffic. Rockrimin is a neighborhood library that services our area of the city, an area that most people assume is wealthy. In actuality, our community is a beautiful mix of many different socioeconomic groups, including lower-income families, disabled folks, retirement communities, elementary schools and middle schools belonging to two different school districts, some new neighborhoods, and some very old neighborhoods, all of which are not serviced by any other community buildings. Twenty-One C and the East location are not sufficient replacements for our neighborhood library. At your October sixteenth meeting, you repeatedly said that this board exists to serve the county as a whole, and that closing Rockrimin is the best decision, big-picture-wise. I see it in this way. Our county is made up of many small communities. Taking valuable resources away from smaller communities is not serving the county as a whole. It's setting a precedent to make reactionary decisions that will harm our county. Instead of pro, instead of proactive decisions that will enhance our county. A board member was quoted yesterday in a Gazette article saying, "We want to serve everyone equitably." That is exactly what we are asking for. Please let the public help you act on what you have said your obligation is, and look out for the entire county's best interest by supporting our Westside community, serving everyone equitably, and extending the lease for one more year.
And I am in third grade. When I was in Trailblazer Elementary, we went on a field trip. It was not my first experience at the library, but it was my first chance to get my own library card in second grade. I could check out I could check out books about animals for free. Right next to my house, we bike to Rockrimin Library. It is my safe place, and I check out books at at, I can check out books at Rockrimin Library, and my family likes it here, Rockrimin Library. Thank you.
I just like to dad with two dyslexic kids. It's been amazing to see them rent their own books, stay up past their bedtime after you tell them to go to bed, reading the graphic novels on long road trips to Kansas back home. They get the audiobooks, and it's silent and beautiful. But we do bike a lot to the library. It's through Uvalde, so we get to have some fun with picking up books, and so it's just a great adventure for the kids. Thank you.
Our next three are, uh, Burget Landon, Lisa Bigelow, and Eric Lundberg. Burget Landon, Lisa Bigelow, Eric Lundberg.
Hello, my name is Birgit Landon, and I thank the board for the opportunity to express my, um, my thoughts. And some of the previous speakers have been quite kind. Truly, I am just dismayed and angry that you did not adequately involve the community in your decision. And I believe you have failed the community in your decision to close the Rockrimin Library. It does not appear that you explored other options such as a mill levy, grants, donations, or considering the closure of Penrose Library, which has many issues. Closing libraries, though, however, is just wrong. The Rockrimin Library serves as an anchor in the Northwest part of the city, providing true community connections and resources. It is a vital service that has brought real value to my neighborhood, visiting the library, participating in programs, and seeing what's happening in the community around me. And not just for me, many people across the entire community come to the Rockrimin Library. My elderly mother will not be able to drive to Library Twenty-One C or the East Library. And she depended on the guidance of the incredible librarians at Rockrimin to assist her with her book selections. It is shameful that the Pikes Peak Library Board Trustees is closing this branch and rumored other branches. You are not serving the community. I am asking you to postpone closing the Rockrimin Library to allow for full exploration of other options.
Good evening. Good evening, Board of Trustees. My name is Lisa Bigelow, and I'm here to present Dr. Gary Karasopoulos' analysis since he is unable to attend. We are residents in the Rockrimin in Oregon neighborhoods. The following slides are his analysis of the district's twenty-twenty-four facilities master plan, which is a report that we understand used to justify the closure of the Rockrimin Library. After the analysis of the master plan and the board's decision and justification, we don't think the board completed an ethical and fiscally, fiscally responsible assessment. If you look at, uh, the chart, called bottom line chart, here is the bottom line. Both circulation data from the district and the master plan show Rockrimin to be one of the busiest libraries Both circulation data from the district and the master plan show Rockremen to be one of the busiest libraries in the entire district. Although their master plan has some good analysis in it, there are several critical deficiencies. The report ignores standard cost metrics per library. Such as the operation cost per circulated item, the cost per visit and the opportunity cost of ownership versus leased facilities. Also, it admitted key customer analyses, the impact to Eagleview Middle students, the impact on the elderly, as well as the lack of public transportation to other branches. Justification in the master plan to close Rockremen made a blith statement. The patrons can easily drive to other libraries. That is just not true. Neither the board nor the master plan addressed white cutting, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. About one half of one percent of the forty-two million dollar budget is considered significant cost savings. The boards claim that Rockremen has a high lease cost of certainly cherry pick data. Dr. Kay's analysis shows Rockremen is one of the most cost-efficient libraries in the entire system. Facts matter. If you turn to the circulation chart, page three, the next few charts show supporting evidence of the facts. For the district's own published data, in twenty-two, in twenty twenty-two, Rockremen had the second highest circulation of the twelve community libraries. With more loaned materials than even Penrose. One point, oh, one minute. Okay, business chart, go to page four. The master plan shows Rockremen to be the second highest business of all the district libraries. This is an efficiency measure, maintenance cost, page five. The master plan provided a ten-year deferred maintenance cost estimate of each of the facilities. Rockremen is very low at two hundred and sixty thousand. Page six, his analysis shows Rockremen is low cost. He calculated a cost per circulated item and that you can see is highlighted in green for each of the facilities. At two dollars and forty-four cents, Rockremen is the fourth most cost efficient and within a penny tied for third. The message is that a closer look at the cost is warranted. Closing Rockremen due to high lease cost is irrational and an incomplete story. Conclusion, both the district and the master plan show Rockremen to be one of the busiest of all the libraries in terms of circulation. The master plan is missing standard management analysis, which should be done before making any decision to close your library. Facts matter and I do just want to thank you all and respectfully request that the board of trustees re-vote. And re-vote on the closure of the library until an adequate financial community assessment can be done with transparency, facts and citizen input. And I thank you.
My name is Eric Lundberg and my family moved to the Rockremen area in early nineteen eighty-nine. Later that year, the Rockremen Library opened a great fanfare where it has remained a vital community resource for the past thirty-five years. I became a regular patron again when I moved back into the neighborhood ten years ago. I walked to the library at least once a week. When I heard about the potential for the library to be closed earlier this year, I was taken aback. Yet I figured it would be a last resort and our city would never stoop so low as to close libraries. But here we are. This board has been grasping for reasons to justify rushing into a decision to close a library. You say there is deferred maintenance across the district, but you haven't spoken about a plan to address that. How exactly will the savings of a half a percent of your budget by closing a branch going to improve finances? You say we can just drive to another library, but as you've been told repeatedly, many library patrons don't have the option to drive to another branch. You say our fundraising, putting our own money down to keep our library open doesn't matter because it's not about a single year. But you have an option on the table to sign a one-year lease. You say you need to serve the growing eastern part of the city. I completely agree that the district should be able to expand along with the growing city without closing branches in the process. You say the decision to close the library wasn't rushed into because you found past meeting limits that indicate a closure was considered ten years ago. But none of the current libraries were involved at that time. It's disingenuous to bring that up now as justification for your hasty decisions. And perhaps most insultingly, we claim public communication was crucial in determining the way forward. The public input that was gathered revealed that Rockremen is one of the most used branches in the district. Yet the master plan still included a scenario in which our library would be closed. And at that point, no further public input was sought to help inform your selection of the plan's three options. You not only rushed, you not only rushed to a decision to close a library, but you also rushed the implementation of that decision. The master plan allows for a lease renewal of up to three years. So why do you claim that we need to start making changes now? That's not what your own plan tells us. Your actions and decisions as board members should be rooted in the values of Pike's Peak Library District, which include access. You're making our access much more difficult at best and cutting it off completely for those who can't make it to another branch. Service, you're supposed to remove barriers, not create new ones. Freedom, you're supposed to ensure we can interact with library services as we choose. Accountability, there's been very little transparency as part of this process. Creativity, where are the creative solutions to the issues facing the district? Closing a library is the easy way out, not creative problem solving. Community, you're supposed to bring people together. I suppose you've succeeded with that one. Just look at us all here. It didn't have to be this way. We should have been working together to find the creative solutions missing from this process. And it can still be that way. It's not too late. Instead of grasping for reasons to rush into and justify your decision, reach out to us in the community and let's work together.
Our next three are Charlie Baginsky, Terry Carver and Andrew Bacon. Charlie Baginsky, Terry Carver, Andrew Bacon.
I'm Charlie and I just turned nine. I went to preschool right next door to Rockremen Library. And I would go there almost every day after school. I love the library and I think there should be a place for everyone to go and get books for free. I don't think we should close any libraries. We need more, not fewer.
My name is Terry Carver and I'm a longtime Rockremen resident over twenty-five years. My family, my children, extensively use Rockremen Library. And so I'm here to urge you to reconsider the current path you're on. And here's why I say that. And I'm going to focus primarily on the Rockremen Community Center. It's not an officially designated community center, but that's truly what it is. If you looked at the criteria of what constitutes a community center in Colorado Springs. You would find that Rockremen is doing all of this with volunteers, with community groups, adults and senior programs. Early childhood, elementary programs, summer programs, teen programs. Um, let me just give you a few of the senior programs. You've heard of some of them. Happy Crafters, Financial Basics, Trauma-Informed Yoga and Meditation, Rockremen Art, Rockremen Mostly Fictional Book Club. Uh, Teaching Seniors How to Use Computers. Uh, trustees. And I'm sure you know this from your elderly family members, but when I was young, I provided assistance to elderly in their homes. And in addition to that, when I was a state rep, when I dealt with seniors who didn't have computer skills or emails. We worked out something so they could go to the library with the help of the staff to fill out online forms. But there was things we needed to do with a problem they had with the state agency. Both of those experiences in my youth and in recent past taught me an important thing about seniors. As they age, their, their scope of comfortable activities narrows.
You have one minute.
And so it is simply factually incorrect to say that it is an equivalent service equally accessible to seniors to go to Twenty-One C and East Library. They simply won't go. It is too far. It's not neighborhood. They won't be comfortable. All of these connections that give their life a way to not be isolated, um, is going to disappear. Um, I could list out ten activities for tweens and teens that are done on an ongoing basis at Rockremen. Again, consistent with community centers. It is far more than just a place to check out books. It is not equivalent to go to Library Twenty-One C or East. It's simply, it's factually not true. And so I would ask, could we work together? Could we work together with the community, the city council, with you to find a way forward in this upcoming year? Thank you.
Hey there. My name is Andrew Bacon. I live right in Golden Hills and I've been there since twenty twenty. I fled Denver during COVID with my family and the Rockremen Library was an awesome place that my family and I landed. I've been guilty of walking out with even a book that was on the used book shelf and having to go back to pay a quarter for the used book. I love that whole program. So I've been, I've been sitting, I've been, I've been to some of these meetings, done the talks, talked a lot about you all, uh, but not to you all yet. And I'm thankful to talk to you and I want to say to you all, my friends and neighbors and just the community, I am a Christian. And I need to apologize. For twenty or so years, I have been occupied with raising my family, married eighteen years, raising my three kids. And working to provide for them. And truthfully, I've been guilty of Teddy Roosevelt's quote of being the, not the critic who counts. It's not the critic who counts, but the man who's marred and dusty in the ring. And I think that we are seeing a lot of this in our country that, especially with Christians, I think, I'll be the first to admit that it's easy to criticize. It's easy to have all these opinions and get online. And I haven't been involved in government affairs or political or civic affairs until like the last month. And I'm, I apologize. I have sat by and been preoccupied with personal things. And just like the county, county commissioner chair, I think, said that we live in a great country where we have represented government and we trust them to represent us and to appoint members. But I think one of the things that this has taught me is that elections have consequences. And when we get so preoccupied in our yard and watching things on TV and on social media and staying out of it and staying clean, that we end up here. And, and I don't know you, the board, I, I know how you voted. I tried to listen in and, and watch some videos. I am concerned about this, obviously the situation, but I'm, I'm really concerned about the question behind the question, the Q B Q of the leadership here. The lack of communication and collaboration, the, the, this, the seeming cloak and dagger. It is very hard for citizens to get involved and understand. I, I don't even know who you are. Half of your bios aren't even published on, on your website. You're the leader, you're the trustees. Of the community, we are entrusting this to you. And if, and if the way you treated the community, the, the leader of your charge, truly, if, if this was how I treated people in my organization, I would have been fired. And if this is how I treated my clients, I'm a real estate agent, if I treated people like this, I'd be fired. And, um, if this is an indication of how the Pike's Peak Library organization is being run, I'm, I'm even more concerned about them and those employees. So I just wanted to share that and hope that you consider your leadership and your legacy beyond even the library of Rockremen, but the whole organization. Thank you. And thank you.
We are only going to take three more folks because you've got to take a break. Cause we have to go to executive session because we have a meeting at seven o'clock that we cannot miss. But we will be back and if you just hang on until we finish with our executive session, but it, before seven o'clock at six forty-five, we will be moving into executive session.
And they'll come back. Do you want to call three more or until six forty-five?
Well, it's six thirty. Can we do three more before we go? Three more. If we do it quickly, we're going to go off the scale. Can I have someone on the board moves to move, move to, uh, go to the executive session. After the three that we have and we will, it will take us about fifteen to twenty minutes. We are going to be meeting with, uh, legal counsel. So that's about how long it'll take. And then we will come back and we will come back to the, uh, citizens comments at that point as well. So if you can just hang in there, but we, we need three more and then we'll be into executive session.
All right. So the next three, and I've told one person is out in the hall, which they're grabbing Bruce Ackley, Ginny Springmeyer and Josephine Parker. Bruce Ackley, Ginny Springmeyer, Josephine Parker, since we're waiting for Bruce, Ginny or Josephine, feel free to take the microphone.
Good evening. My name is Josephine Parker and I'm here tonight to state the importance of the Rockremen Library. I am eleven years old and I go to, and I'm in sixth grade. I go to Eagleview Middle School, which is very close to the Rockremen Library. The majority of my friends walk home from school, but most of their houses are walking distance. So they walk to the library. At the library, you can stay as long as you want. Therefore, they can stay there until their parents get off work and can pick them up. There, they can do homework, study, use the internet and play provided games. In addition, libraries are safe educational spaces. Without this library, many people, young and old, will lose their, these services and this gathering space. If we didn't have this library, it'd be a three-hour-long round trip to the nearest library by bus. Recently, I've been doing a project in school involving, involving biographies. The school libraries are only so big. For the person I'm researching, they only had one book. That book was meant for younger kids, so I couldn't get much information out of it. Having a library so close is very convenient. To sum it up, the Rockremen Library is very useful in many ways and I'm grateful to have it. I really, I really hope that you change your minds and keep Rockremen open. Thank you.
Hi folks. My name is Bruce Ackley. I've lived in the Rockremen area for about thirty-one years, about a half mile from the library. And, uh, as all these folks will attest to, I'm up here to say just a few words. How embarrassing is this? To actually have this on the table. I volunteer over at Glen Aryan and I give the history of Colorado Springs to folks. General Palmer would be appalled. He started Colorado Springs, Colorado College, gave the libraries free land, government free land. And here we are trying to close down a library. It's in a beautiful place over on the northwest side of town. We've been there for a long, long time. We've got such a great neighborhood. All the kids are around, they walk in there and so on and so forth. And this is what we have to deal with. We have hundreds of people outside this room. We have thousands of people in our neighborhood that would love to be here. But because of the size of the room, can't be here. So I just want to make it short and sweet. I want to tell you that this is not a good decision. Rethink it, re-vote it, and I'm speaking, I believe, on behalf of the rest of the class.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Ginny Springmeyer. I've been a resident of Rockremen for a long I've been a resident of Rock Roman for a little forty years. I came here, um, to establish my insurance agency. And I made my home here, lived here ever since. I've used my library card consistently at the Rock Roman Library. And when I had time to come over here, East Library was my second choice. Although it's certainly across town. I hope to be here celebrating Library Week with La- Rock Roman Library next spring. As with many others, I was amazed that the library board took. Fast action. No other city or town in the state of Colorado has been threatened with the loss of a library. I don't think that's something we're proud of. In all towns. We are confident that we are offered several things through our libraries. You remember these old terms. Read to succeed. Learning is free. Along with lifelong learning described to every library in existence. The idea of read to succeed should not have a tight timeline. We cannot take a page from that book. It used to be that a person went through school to a job, kept that same job until retirement. Not anymore. Now a person will likely have between five and seven jobs in his or her lifetime. Each job will call for different skills and vocabularies. The library can and will serve as a people's university. Allowing individuals of all ages to have access to the necessary information. As they prepare for their future. In an accessible way. The reason our accessible Rock Roman Library is so needed. Is now more than ever critical reading and writing skills are needed in order to have fulfillment in life. And to have economic security. We are returning to a time when an elite minority is in control of all public and private enterprises. Because they will be the only ones functionally literate employees available. This elite liberate. Liberates class makes up no more than thirty-five percent of our population. According to a recent news report. Even though libraries have grown with the digital world. Removing a library, Rock Roman, within a large population of this city, becomes an enforced detriment. This library is a prize to all ages and to the city. Colorado Springs is currently courting a number of large industries, investors, manufacturers. Universities along with our military who all surveyed the city as they review our governance policies. You find that a library has been closed will damage our reputation that will be impossible to overcome. No place in all of Colorado, from very small towns to larger cities, has closed a library. That image will be impossible to erase. The library board have the ability to address the taxpayer budget that allows fifty-one cents per day. Taxpayer, the average budget for libraries in Colorado is seventy-four cents. There are ways for budgets to be managed. When a board's actions are asked for review, the number quoted is, they require three hundred and sixty reviews. I'm quite sure that the closure of the Rock Roman Library has received far over three hundred and sixty reviews. And the result is clear. For a multitude of reasons, Rock Roman Library, essential to this community and to the city of Colorado Springs. Must not close.
Can we allow one more, please, on personally on behalf of the courts and Paul, of Paul's economy?
Quickly, yes, so that we can go through. My name is Liz. Banana. I'm an attorney here in Colorado Springs. I moved here in twenty fifteen. I've used our libraries ever since. My understanding is that this is primarily financially driven. My understanding also is that December fourth is the final reconsideration of the budget. That will affect this decision. There is still time to reverse this decision. Four tenants underlie how this board is to make these decisions. One of them primary is community trust. Look at the community's voice. Listen to your community. It strikes me that three of these members have their backs turned against the community in this very meeting. You are not listening to your community. I come here because I have been working with this library and with different library branches. To put on divorce seminars. I'm a divorce attorney. Seventy-five percent. Who go through divorces in Colorado Springs, go through divorce pro se. They do not have access to attorneys. My plan is to hold as many seminars on how to proceed through a divorce on your own as possible. You are limiting our community's resources in ways that are beyond the budget. Please do not shut down one of our very used and efficient branches. Because our court system relies on resources such as this. That we can attempt to assuage the issues of overpopulation. And the overneed that we have in our court system today. And overpopulation. In the last few years, the Colorado Springs population has exploded. City Council continues to approve more and more housing. Thank you. That housing is bringing in, uh, and, and our community is bringing in more and more people. I think the last time I looked. It was forty-five thousand additional population in the last three years. And that does not include our military population. What is happening is the closure of the resources and the infrastructure available. For that growing and exploding community. Reasonable densification. In requires that we uplift this infrastructure rather than shut it down. Please do not make this decision or reconsider the decision here. It isn't final and don't turn your backs to your community.
I'm with the Pike Peak Library District Board moving to executive session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, uh, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor of going into executive session, signify by saying aye. Same sign? So there were three ayes and two noes. And Angela voted, I, yeah, okay.
I voted aye.
Okay, so we will go into executive session. At this time, you will resume the meeting of pub, of the public session right now. So. Those of you, I will wait for Jeremiah to call, uh, the names on the list. And by the way, I know that, uh, it was mentioned that we had people, uh, with their backs to the audience. They are not. Board members, they are, are directors in the library. They're library leadership staff.
Alright. The next three people are. Erin Powers. Kevin Binkley. And Judith Darcy.
Okay, good evening, board members. Good evening, board members. My name is Erin Powers. Um, I hope you knew that we had two hundred people outside that were needing to speak. Um, I would first like to address this idea of the move to the east. So Colorado Springs is expanding, our county is developing. And, um, you know, there's expansion to the northeast and the east. That is not shifting. So northwest is still increasing. There's no move to the east. Um, I gave you all, uh, handouts with a ten minute drive time analysis. So, uh, if there are any questions on the methods, I'd be happy to discuss those with. Um, Rockerman Library, Shona Mello with Red Polygon. Need four brave people to stop this momentum so that we can have a productive and solutions oriented process. What do you believe and are you willing to make your own decision? This is one of the most impactful decisions that you will make in your lives. You truly are our only hope. So please do the right thing. Extend a year so that every option can be fully explored before a library is closed.
Good evening, my name is Kevin Binkley. Just wanted to. I'm primarily going to speak in reference to the facility master plan and how it did not support the closing of the library, but I, I wanted to. To take another route quickly because frankly, um, it may fall on deaf ears, but. Uh, I just want to note that you are all appointed by the city council and the county commissioners of. Our great El Paso County and City of Colorado Springs. That in thereby makes you public servants. Who then are in charge of public money. And, and, and at the very least, there is a large tax base in the northwest portion of Colorado Springs. That our tax money goes to pay for this library. And we want to keep this library open. So as public servants dealing with taxpayer money. It is your obligation to reconsider this. And make sure this is the right decision that you're doing with public money. This is not your money. This is our money. So again. Please reconsider based on the outpouring of support. You never would have thought there was three hundred and fifty people here to tell you, you made the wrong decision. We will do everything we can to support this with our money. This is not your money, it is our money. And at the end of the day, the facility master plan. Comes down to, it, it needs to be completely redone in the sense of, it talks about ADA entrances. It needs a button to open the door. It is flat. We have, we have plenty of parking. The flooding cost was seventeen thousand dollars in the wettest year in a hundred years. The, the landlord took care of everything else. Uh, parking is not an issue. Uh, spe- the space is too small for usage, but is, is not a reason to close it. It's a reason to expand it. Because there's so much that, that we have at this library. Um, replacing restroom fixtures. I mean, these are all minor maintenance deficiencies, drywall, things of that nature. There's so many more maintenance needs that you have the other libraries that pale in comparison to, to the Rocker and the library. We have the twelve highest, fifth lowest, mind you, ten year maintenance projection of the sixteen facilities you have. So we are the fifth lowest of the sixteen you have with maintenance. It, it is, it is economical and, and the efficiencies are all there. The, the retaining wall was not included in the facility, in the facility condition assessment is what your master plan said. You know why? Cause it's not a real issue. It isn't. We had, we spent seventeen thousand on that maintenance. That was it. And frankly, the highest operational cost per square foot is extremely misleading. Rockham is the third most co- cost efficient and has the second highest usage efficiency base on the, on the facility master plan, which should be, which. I think others are talking to, um, and, and other libraries are neither nearby nor easily accessible. That's from the facility master plan itself and that it needs, that, that is incorrect. But most importantly, do your public servant duty. And listen to the people that pay the taxes that you are spending because it's our money. It is not your money.
Hi, I'm Judy Darcy. I'm a resident of the Rockerman Neighborhood. I'm a library patron. I'm a registered voter and I'm an activist. You are the board of trustees. That means you're entrusted to represent the community. You currently have lost our trust. Really? And instead, you have the opportunity to regain it. You can vote to keep this library open for one year. You can just. You know, you can call a new vote. You can say, we're going to keep it open for one year. And you can leverage this amazing group of people. We have raised fifty-nine thousand, fifty-nine thousand dollars. In three weeks to keep this library open in pledges. In three weeks. So I got this thing in the mail. Anybody else get this? They're asking us for seventy-five grand. They sent this to Rocker and the neighborhood. Why are we going to give you seventy-five grand when you're just going to close our library? We've already got fifty-nine thousand dollars. Hey, so you, this shows you how much this library means to us and means to our community. Fifty-nine thousand dollars in three weeks. Come on. You have the opportunity. To take advantage of all of this. Your statement said, you're considering adding a stop to the PPLD low, mobile library services schedule. Or pacing book drops or kiosks throughout Rockerman. Our library is more than a place to pick up books. And when I was there last Saturday, there were dozens of people in there. We were using computers or printing or reading reference materials, periodicals. Meeting with neighbors, asking questions of librarians. You can't do that from the bookmobile or a kiosk. This is our library. Rock Roman doesn't have a library, a, a community center. This is our community center. Our library is always busy. The library is a support for me and many of my neighbors that cannot travel to other libraries. And don't make that face at me. That's rude. There is no bus route for our neighborhood to take to other libraries. We won't get a bus route. You're right. You seem to be taking the easy way out and don't seem to be listening to your own patrons. Many people have started asking, what's the real motive behind this? There were hundreds of us out waiting outside the door to speak and you guys wouldn't release the signup sheets until four minutes before five PM. That's not how you show that you're a board representing our interests. We are asking you to give us the year to come up with a better solution. We're not asking you. We're asking you to give us the year. We will do the work. If you, okay, so. I'm going to skip ahead. Progress comes incrementally. Destruction is instant- instantaneous. Do not destroy our library and make us fight for increments. Every single meeting after this in order to get a library back in Rockerman. Cause we'll be back every single mi- meeting. Everyone else says it's for the children. It is. It's also for the adults that pay the taxes and the adults that vote. And we will vote out the people who appoint you if you, you're right. If, if you go through with this, but thank you very much for your time.
The next three are Bill Wyson. Aria Duvall. And I believe Will Rogan, might be Rogers, but Rogan perhaps, Will Rogan? Rogers?
Question is for, um. Process. It was just kind of addressed and I, I just want to get clarification. At five to five, there was maybe fifty to a hundred people still waiting in line. Were they able to sign up to speak?
According to, uh, Jeremiah that took the.
Some people that had signed up even after five.
Okay.
We did our best effort to, everybody that had signed yes on one of these sheets is in line to speak.
It sounded as though they weren't going to be able to and my. Person was, if you were in line to vote, you got to vote. And so I just wanted to make sure that, um, those that were in line had the opportunity. So thank you. Uh, I'm Bill Wyson, uh, president of Mountain Shadows for a couple more months. Uh, also county commissioner, district three elect. Um, and I'm here because this is my neighborhood. Um, moved to Mountain Shadows in eighty-six. And that library came shortly thereafter. The Rock Roman Library probably covers an area of about twenty-five to thirty thousand people. A lot of interesting things have impacted the northwest part of Colorado Springs. Waldo Canyon fire to to name the most critical one. We got probably more people here about this library than we have a lot of the other things that have happened to Mountain Shadows, Rockerman and Peregrine. So I I'm asking that you take this into consideration for your decision. Andrew Carnegie started the library system. So one of the things that he talked about is it's entertaining and it's the educating the millions. It's the temple of learning, ambition and aspiration for towns and cities throughout the U S. This is what started the whole library system in the United States. It's the second largest used library in the system. By definition, this would be the second to the last library you close. So I'm asking that you really understand that if you've got a smaller library that is so heavily used, it should not be closed because it affects more people. So with that, there are solutions. And I am offering that here to help solve this problem.
We check out lots of books every week. When the weather's nice, my mom and I like to ride our bikes up there to pick up books and stuff for ice cream on our way home. But Rockerman Library means a lot more to us than just the books. It's an important part of our community. It's a place where parents in the neighborhood can come together for taller time, like the ones my mom and dad raised till when we were little. It's a shared space that our community uses for all sorts of activities, like a meeting place for my little sisters' go scout trip. It's a place where my family can spend time together that has something for all of us. While I'm searching for a good book to crumple in my favorite comfy chair, my baby sister likes to color out that art table, but my other two sisters are usual things, zookeepers, barn monsters, hunters or cooks at the restaurant. Community should be able to speak up about decisions about place about places like this that we all share, but nobody asked. Nobody asks us for ideas to help keep our library open. Nobody asks us what we'd be willing to contribute to help find a solution. Nobody listened to how much Rockerman Library means to us. It's just been taken away from us without asking, and I think that's just wrong. Thank you for your time.
Rogers, uh I'd like to start on a positive note. The comments we have heard from the board give us something that I think we agree on, which is that we all love libraries. And because we all love libraries, I've been assuming the last thing any of us would ever want to do is close one. That we would try literally anything and everything we could think of to keep from closing a library. We beat every bush. We'd make every phone call. We'd look under every seat cushion. We'd talk to anyone who would talk to us, listen to any idea we could hear. We would fight. We would move slowly, carefully, so that we looked at every option. We would fight to the last second of the last round to try to keep that from happening. That's what the hundreds of people that are here have done. That's what the people in the hallway did. That's what the people online did. I would like to understand better what the board did. I ask that because assuming you love libraries, I was assured and reassured by a note I got from a board member a few weeks before October sixteenth, reassuring me that closing the Rockerman Library was quote, "One of three preliminary recommendations in a report" and that the board would carefully review the report before considering next steps. I read that email and I thought they get it. They support us. They love libraries. The next thing that happened publicly was you voted to close and chose to close the Rockerman Library literally as quickly as possible. So help me understand that. Help me understand what you did since the report to fight for the library. Help me see the phone calls you made. Help me see the attention you drew to the problem. Help me see how you love libraries. The other thing I've heard and agree with from the board is that we have to consider all the patrons in the district. We have to service the growing areas of our city. I totally agree because I love libraries. So let's do that. Let's fight together for the things we love. Let's be courageous and bold and fight to the last second of the fight together. We're ready to do that. Are you? We love libraries. Do you? Thank you. Next three are Jacob Ward, Cat Gale and Dave Donaldson. Jacob Ward, Cat Gale, Dave Donaldson.
Hi, uh I'm Jacob Ward. I'm representing our workers union here, Pike's Peak Library Workers United. Um so over the past few months, our union kind of focused on the pay discrepancies between the past few years and our pay compared to other libraries. Um we focused on understaffing and burnout. And in more recent times, we've been focusing on the closure of Rockerman. Um our interests align with the community. We want libraries to thrive, not just exist. Um and so I know you are all looking at other leased locations like Ruth Holly, Shine Mountain and Monument. Um and the closure of Rockerman and the low pay for staff are just two symptoms, but not the root cause of these problems. So a big part of the problem is the budget. Um there has been an irresponsible allocation of money that has not been pushing for the library's main mission to cultivate spaces for belonging, personal growth and strong communities. New employees and existing employees are also not getting paid enough. Um this is not going to be fixed by library closures without workers that are sustained and provided what we need to thrive in and outside of the workplace. No PPLD branch functions at all. Um so it's a continued stance of our union that no libraries should be closed and that staff needs to be taken care of. So the people in charge are sitting at this table right now. Your decisions affect our libraries and our workers. Um the facilities master plan emphasized that PPLD needs money. Um that was really the biggest takeaway I got from it. And one of the most irresponsible decisions has been to not pursue funding through either traditional or creative reps. Um money will be set aside next year for another consultant to examine the feasibility of a mill levy override measure. Um it's clear that with proper outreach and the community support, a bill for a mill levy override would pass. If the outreach was there, we could get this done. Our union is here to communicate and collaborate with the people who care about libraries. So together we have a lot more say in what happens as a group. Um the library district, thanks, needs to do whatever it can to pursue more funding before more libraries close and before more workers leave the workplace due to insufficient support. Um last thing, our union held an event on Saturday. It's called the State of the Library. Um there's a live stream up on Facebook. It's got a lot of great speakers, um and then also some worker perspectives on how funds are spent within the district on what's effective and what isn't. So I recommend checking that out. It's a Pike's Peak Library Workers United on Facebook. Um and thank you.
Hi. I'm Cat Gale. My last paid job was the senior human rights advisor in the democracy and governance section of the U S Embassy in Haiti. In this job, most of my work was analyzing government decisions for transparency and adherence to the rule of law. Here I stand before you. This decision was made in violation of the sunshine law of the state of Colorado and in violation of your own bylaws and your own fiduciary responsibilities. This is a draft complaint for declaring our judgment in an injunction to have this decision stopped, reversed, or at least delayed. Now, I'm not here to threaten you. Two weeks ago, I had a meeting with the head of the Fort Collins City Library, who was formerly the community director of the Denver Public Library System. And they had a situation like we did here, massively expanding communities who want access to libraries. Now, we all know that my friends who live out in Black Forest that we do four H with are not expecting to have a library that they can walk to when they're living miles and miles beyond powers. I'd like to give them libraries. But here's something that this library director told me. They were trying to close a branch called Buyer's Branch. It was a half a mile from the nearest library and it was one mile of the central library of Denver, which is phenomenal, by the way. And people were upset, just like we are. They were crying. It was where they went for community. A library is not about books. It's about community. It's book groups. It's where the zoo brings their reptiles. It's where people with brain injuries can take art class. It's where you can have trauma-informed yoga. I'm not from Rockerman. My closest library is library twenty one C. But a lot of the groups I work with are not comfortable in that environment and we go to Rockman Library. The double door, the lack of the light, the lack of the sound for people with sensory issues. Rock Riman works. So this librarian said to me in tears herself, I did not go to library science school to close libraries. Do you know what they did? They reversed their decision. They said, what can we do to make it work? There were furloughs. There were rolling closures of different libraries. There were shorter hours here. But it worked. And do you know what? Two brand spanking new shiny libraries in the Denver Public Library System and Buyer's Library is still open to this day. Please use this brain trust with free hours. You don't have to pay for consultants. They'll do it for free and let's make this work.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. Good evening, uh citizens. I'm Dave Donaldson. I'm the city councilman from District One. Uh it's good to to see all of you actually and and uh you know, I I voted uh for four of you to put you on on the board. So tonight I'm gonna come before you again and ask you once more to go ahead and accept the offer for a one year lease, an extension at a reduced cost with a guarantee that if there's any flooding, that'll be covered. Why should we do that? A lot of it is is right in this room and in in that neighborhood and the neighborhoods that surround Brockerman Library. When you made this decision a month ago, you know, initially, you hadn't seen this yet. You hadn't seen the outpouring of support. I think maybe some facts have been pointed out by some some folks smarter than me, financial folks about the finances and how really efficient this library is. Um I I said this on council, if you want, I said this to my colleagues, if we want to find a way to help, we'll find it. And I I really believe if you want to find a way to keep this one library, Rockerman Library, one percent of your budget, that's including some of the labor, half a percent, if you just look at the uh the rental fee. If you want to find a way to do it, you can, right? If you don't, if you want to find a way to say, well, you know, the consultant said this is the one we should close, you'll be able to do that. But I I'm here and all these people are here to ask you to find a way to keep it open. The discussion about the east, like, hey, we need libraries out east. I agree with that. They all agree with that. Again, this is one percent or less of the budget. If this closes, you've then created a an issue in the northwest part of the city, right? If if Rockerman Library wasn't there, after all that you've seen over the last month, I think you would say, damn, we need to put a library in there. They're so passionate about the library. It does so many different functions that it's worth it to put it in there. So you can save it now and and build rapport, you know, build rapport with the citizens up there. So if you do come forward with a mill levy request increase, you'll you'll have, I believe you'll have support. A lot of us that are here are trying to point out a specific piece of data or something like that to you. It's not going to be, you've heard it over and over. What we really need is is really a change in your heart uh to desire to keep Rockman Library o- open. There's some specifics here I'm not going to touch on. People have asked for you to vote on it tonight. I understand that's probably not possible, right? Because it wasn't noticed that you'd be voting on it. But you do have a meeting on December eighth, or you can call one before that to reconsider this. I again, I think you've had information introduced now that you didn't have before. It makes sense to keep libraries in in dense parts of the city and there are a lot of homes, a lot of schools. It's been pointed out the uh the travel time to twenty one C and east. So again, as a fellow uh servant in this city to the citizens, I ask you to reconsider that decision. Thank you.
Our next three are Nancy McCaffrey, Audra Talamontes and Kenneth Bowen. Nancy McCaffrey, Audra Talamontes, Kenneth Bowen.
Can y'all hear me? Okay? Okay. Hi, good evening. I'm Audra Talamontes. I'm a second grade teacher at Wilson Elementary and I'm a bit of a square pegging around hole tonight um because I'm here to talk about the Ruth Holly Library, which I believe is second on your list for potential closure. Um, we need that library in our community. Um and I know you've proposed a bookmobile as a Band-Aid offer, but it would not suffice as an adequate replacement. Our students also need the digital access as do their parents. Uh outside of school, sorry, the notes are chugging. Um D eleven issued digital devices no longer go home with students and even if they were sent home, not everybody has access to wifi. Which makes doing your homework and completing your assignments rather difficult. Uh today's educational system is heavily digitally dependent with assignments and tests being completed via Schoology. And internet access is crucial. Closing the library would close access to educational success. It affects their parents as well who need digital access to help pay bills, fill out rental forms, pay their medical forms or fill out my medical forms and pursue higher education via an online platform. I've also used the library for online uh education. Uh not that I didn't have wifi at home. It's just my children were there and I needed somewhere quiet to go. Today I told my students that I was speaking here tonight because the PPLD board was considering closing their library or within a one mile walk of uh Ruth Holly. Uh they could not wrap their minds around the fact that the library would no longer be there. Instead, they were very excited talking over each other with how they enjoyed taking trips to the library with their friend or as part of a school field trip. And then they were also very excited to tell me how close their house was to the library and that it was next to the Walmart that they also like to go to. Many of them loved the summer reading program and were very proud of their medals at the beginning of the year. One student introduced herself to me by showing me the reading medal that she earned this summer. So thank you for doing that. Um I think I feel we as a community should be fanning this flame of literacy excitement rather than extinguishing it. I know that one of you here has an educational background at Coronado High and I'd like you to compare the school profiles with that compared to Mitchell High. Both are available online. And it's like comparing apples to oranges. In fact, these school profiles only amplify the need that this corner of Colorado Springs needs. In fact, these school profiles only amplify the need that this corner of Colorado Springs needs all the educational support that it can get. I please ask you to not close the Ruth Hawley Library. And if you do choose to close it, to not close it so abruptly, but to allow time for us as a community to seek other options to keep literacy and digital supports for our students and their families. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. Um, coming forward tonight on behalf of countless citizens who care deeply about Rockremen Library. Um, we respect, uh, the leaked request of one-year delay to reconsider and come together to explore other options. But I want to begin by addressing sort of a broader context of this. Um, you might think that library districts are struggling with budget issues and making closures all across the country, very much like you're dealing with right now, right? We, it's sort of a trending thing because of the economy. Um, but however, I ran an AK News Wire, uh, search looking for reports of permanent library closures across the United States in the past five years. And wow, what it came up with is only two libraries showed up. And one was Edworo Welley Library in Jackson, Mississippi. And the other one was the Rockremen Library. This is in the last five years. So, you're in, this is an outlier. This is extreme. Um, and, uh, the other, actually, recent closure was this past March. And that was at Freed Montrose Library in Houston, Texas. But their story is remarkable. Uh, just two weeks ago, I was surprised, the Houston Public Library District announced the reopening of the Freed Montrose Library. Uh, and how did that happen? It was thanks to a robust citizen effort, working hand in hand with city officials and the mayor. So, you know, it happens. Uh, budgets get, you know, overwhelming. And, uh, the immediate thing we want to do is, uh, cross off a line item when we can work with our community and our cities to not close libraries. The same can happen in our community. So you say you need more money, uh, let's pursue a mill levy. The truth is voters in El Paso County have consistently shown they are willing to support tax increase when the benefits are clearly defined. Look at the most recent election. Academy District Twenty passed their bond issue. Harrison School District approved a tax issue. The Stratmore Hills Fire Prote- Protection District measure passed. All with fifty-seven percent or higher of the vote. Also, I want to correct the statement made by Commissioner Hawley yesterday at our meeting. She suggested the cost of a mill levy campaign is five hundred thousand. Based on data from the Academy District Twenty's recent election, the cost of putting an item on a ballot, even accounting for additional advertising, is closer to three hundred thousand. And there are other ways to lower that. Use a citizen-driven fundraising effort, like we have right here. Uh, and, um, Save Rockup Room and Library, uh, has raised the correct amount, is fifty-six thousand dollars as of this afternoon. So, this community shows, uh, this community shows us that the most important, uh, most recent county commissioner's election, I'm just gonna skip to the very last. So I urge you to take a step back and press the pause button. Let, let's build something together as Houston did. And, um, let's just benefit the community. Rockremen Library is not just a line item. It's a lifeline for the community.
Our next two, Kenneth Bowen, who did not come up, so I'll hold the place for you, Kenneth. You come up, let me know. But our next three, Brooke Graves, Stephanie Moss, and Justin Moss. You are our next three. And Kenneth Bowen, if you're still here, you got a spot as well. Were any of the people I just announced here? Kenneth Bowen, Brooke Graves, Stephanie Moss, Justin Moss.
I believe many people thought that we no longer had a chance.
Yeah.
It was, um,
I shall move on to the next three. Caroline Worley, David Line Weaver, and Savannah Mather. Any of, anybody? I see somebody coming. Okay. And then, David Line Weaver and Savannah Mather.
Yeah, Line Weaver is not here.
Okay.
Hi. Hi, hello. Thank you for all being here. Um, I was at the Twenty-One C meeting and so excited hearing all the encouragement and the offers to fix the solutions. And I thought, okay, this is good. I can go. And then I heard the vote later. Like, no, not yet. Anyway. Uh, Rosena College Springs since AD three, been to Rockremen Libraries since it opened. And used it for college courses and whatnot. And then later on, after had a brain injury seven years ago, so I went to the art classes there, which are so instructional and community-based and just helped me through that. Of course, I'm meeting people. It was a good thing that the library offered only here at, uh, Rockremen and at Twenty-One C. And also, it's just a great place to go. I know you all heard about the money, as she's only been hanging on again. And it's a shame if those closed because who wants to drive across town to Barrow Gate when it's snowy and Rockremen traffic and Woodman traffic? My mom is seventy-seven. She can't drive to Twenty-One C. And I can always be there if I'm going to appointments. So I just wish you would reconsider. Maybe think about options, renting a smaller space in the shopping center. Old vet office that's there, that was taken, closed down. They built a new one. Maybe an older home like the O'Callaghan City Library. It might be within the range. I don't know. But seems like there's lots of solutions, and it would help you think about it and come to a solution. Help you screech, and Save Rockremen Library.
Our next three are Delaney Brandt, Amy Zupar, and Kim Reading, or Reading? Reading would be appropriate, I suppose. Delaney Brandt, Amy Zupar, Kim Reading, are any of you here?
Point of inquiry, then? Can Council Line Weaver call in since he was called on the list? But they sent him a list, and he said that he wasn't gonna be allowed to speak because he was still out in the hall. So he went home. Would he be allowed to call in to speak?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
What number should he call? Um, he joins the Zoom.
He can join the Zoom.
Meeting. Um, and I guess message me because there's ninety-seven other people, so it's gonna be hard for me to know when he jumps in. So if he messages me, I can slide him in, okay? I'll let him know. Thank you. Oh, thank you, David. Okay.
He's saying he's already there.
He's already on? He's here already, they're saying. Well, let's all find him together.
Understand.
I, I think he's driving a car, right?
Well, that's not dangerous. Well, let's, let me go ahead and announce three more, and then I'll try to find and find him in the chat, and we'll, we'll get that sorted out. So let me just go to the next three, and then we'll circle back to that. Sarah Sparks, Brittany Widro, or Widno perhaps, and Abby Misca. Are any of you here? All right. Julie Misca, Stephanie Sabo, or April Hussey or Hussey? Who, who are you? Okay. Thank you, April. They'll, they'll be the next two, so I'll announce them after, after you're done, and I crack down the councilperson that's in the chat.
My name is April Hussey. I've been a resident of Rockremen for eight years. And my family, each of us has our library card. Rockremen Library is a part of our family. We really like this library. The kids have been raised on music and movement, toddler time. My kids have read fifty-plus books this summer. That's incredible. And honestly, we would not have gone to Twenty-One C. We would not have gone to East. We can walk to this library. We can ride our bikes to this library. It's one mile, but it's safe. Our three-year-old, when she was three, she put her little legs and did her strider bike to get to this library, and it was a delight for her. This is an important part of our community. It's part of our family. This library is, there are options. You can find solutions. My day job is an engineer. My night job is a mom. There are ways to find solutions to overcome big problems. You guys can do this. You can do this. You can do hard things. I know I sound like a parent right now, but you can do hard things. I know that you guys want to save libraries. This is something you can do. We are here to gather together to help find the solution that really works. This matters to us deeply. Thank you.
Paul, I'm just gonna announce two names now on the heels of of Ms. Hussey's are Dahlia Hussey and John Hussey. Please come up and speak, and I'm trying to, uh, communicate in the chat with our virtual speaker.
So first, I'm gonna read, uh, a statement from Dahlia, who was the three-year-old on that strider bike. So this is from Dahlia Hussey, who is now five. "I feel sad about the Rockremen Library closing because it is fun and I like to get books every other week. I like our library by Safeway better than the big library by the Walmart because it is fun. It has a fun felt board, and I put letters and pictures on it." Yeah, that's from a five-year-old. Clearly, she likes the Rockremen Library. From me, John Hussey, all I'd say is that this, this group of people is, it's humbling to be around people who they're from all walks of life. We have council members, we have people from all different walks of life. Your children, old, you know, elderly people with disabilities. It's humbling to be around them, right? So, just know that there's people in leadership positions in this room, different types. You are in leadership position. Thank you for that, right? Because nobody here in this, sitting in this room is on the board of, of libraries, right? You guys, you are in this leadership position. You had that forethought to be in that position before anybody else here with our strong opinions did. Thank you. All I'd say about that, and I feel like people in leadership positions from all walks of life would agree with me, that taking information as it's changing and as the environment changes, being able to take and weigh that new information and change your plan, change the way, uh, you decide, that's a sign of good leadership. Right? So just let me restate that being able to take the opinions of others, take the inputs of others, take the expertise of others, and change, change your mind, change your plan, is a, is a sign of good leadership, not weakness. Thank you.
Uh, our next three are Jana Murdoch, Todd Nelson, Rachel Bartlett. Are any of you here? Jana Murdoch, Todd Nelson, Rachel Bartlett. Oh, there was a guess there. It was all, I apologize. We have another member of the Hussey family, Noah. My apologies for the oversight, Noah. The mic is yours.
Okay. Um, I liked, I like our library because it is very close to home, and we can ride our bike. All of us can ride our bikes. I, and I feel, um, calm and safe because I, I know the librarian better and that and over the summer, we can read all I, we can read like, uh, sixty-five books because it's so close because we are so close to this library. So I would like to keep it open.
Hey. Our next three, Henry Bartlett, Josephine RBS Rubio, perhaps? And Leo Finkelstein or Finkelstein? Henry Bartlett, Josephine Rubio, Leo Finkelstein?
I'm Josephine.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't know at the beginning. Okay, I apologize. Okay, Josephine.
Hello. I did not plan on speaking at all, but I also saw all these tons of people outside, and I just felt like you guys needed to hear us, see us. Um, it was so heartwarming, and, you know, obviously, we're all emotional. To see the community coming together, um, as you can probably hear, as everybody knows, I'm German. So I'm really overwhelmed. I'm really proud and, um, seeing people finally getting up and doing something. I feel like Americans are always so polite and don't, don't take steps to, you know, stand in for what they think and always like beat about the bush but not directly say what they think. And, I mean, these people are so smart. So I just tried to something look great. Um, so this is, the energy is amazing. This is how I know the library's energy to be. It's welcoming, loving. Um, I'm honestly going to Cheyenne Mountain Library for the last ten years. That's how long we've been here. And, and like I said, like, they're amazing. I drop off cookies every Christmas because like, they're my people. I want them to know that. Um, so really, to me, what makes logical sense is the only reason to close anything, especially a library that shouldn't be for profit, um, is if nobody would occupy it. But what we've heard here and what I've learned, honestly, I've just come into all of this this past weekend, um, is that we're the second busiest. I just moved to Rockremen too, so, um, it's my duty, you know, to fight for it. Um, so we're the second busiest, so that just doesn't make sense. It's not logical. Make it make sense. Like, I love logic. I love understanding things. Um, so yeah, I just really need to understand this. So, um, this is clearly not the case here, since it's the second busiest in the PBLG system. And I did not think honestly that I had to worry about my kids losing access to a library. I love our library. I tell my German friends, like, everybody, this is the best thing about the city, is the PBLD libraries, like, the, how they stick together, what they provide, the toddler time. Free things. We get to get free books. We don't have to look at the price. Like, we can bring home a hundred books a month in the summer, and without having to look at our budget for our kids. I have four kids. Um, and my daughter reads a lot. So, um, yeah, I just, I'm very, like, I feel like I'm, I woke up um, in the twilight zone that we're even needing to talk about this and fight for this, and there's all these smart people, and we're all willing to help and put our energy and our money behind this. When I get home, I'm gonna pledge a hundred dollars that lady passionately finds for. And so, yeah, the passion is just, it's mesmerizing, and it's just, it's giving me hope that we're not heading towards dark times. So, yeah, thank you so much.
Good evening. My name's Leo Finkelstein. I reside in Mountain Shadows. I am a senior citizen. I'm in my seventies, uh, as is my wife. Um, I brought this sign. Please do not take offense. The reason for this sign is the word "community." Um, I was not planning to speak, so I'm going to speak ex- extemporaneously. Um, the Rockremen Library is so much more to our community than just a library. It is, in fact, the community center for the entire Northwest quadrant of Colorado Springs. I have lived in Mountain I have lived in Mountain Shadows since nineteen eighty-eight. That's thirty-six years. I've raised children. When the children were young, they went to the Rocklerin Library. Girl Scouts was there. Yoga is there. We took cooking classes there. There's art classes there. Yo- uh, I mentioned yoga. It's, it's a community resource, not just for Rockremen. It's Mountain Shadows, Peregrine, Indian Valley, Pine, Pine Clifford, whatever the one was up on the hill. Um, there are so many other communities that use the Rockremen Library. When people in our community have found out this is closed, look who's here. Look at everyone. When I was out in the hall at the back of the line, there were about two hundred people out there. There was another hundred fifty appear. There's another hundred and some odd on, on the internet. This library is the heart of the community. And what does that mean? If you, the Northwest Quadrant is generally thought of as the north of Fillmore and west of Nevada or I-25. That is a huge geographical area and this is the community heart of that area. The, uh, outpouring of the community is self-evident. You do have the power to change your decision. Use it. The community is asking for one year to come up with a better solution. The amount that you would spend in that year, from what I've heard, is approximately one half of one percent of your budget. Use it. It's an incredibly important asset to the community. It's a very highly used community. Um, another thing I timed it, when I walked out of my door, when I was in the car, pulling out of our driveway, I'm coming here tonight. Took twenty-seven minutes to reach the parking lot, plus the time to walk into the library. My wife, who's also in her seventies, she made the comment that she was terrified of the traffic and would not come here for any reason. She uses the Rockremen Library herself at least twice a week, in person. So she would be losing that resource. My children attended that library. I don't know if any of you remember nineteen ninety-two and there was a game, the Oregon Trail. We went to the library to use computers. We didn't have home computers. It's, it's so meaningful in so many ways. Please respect the wishes of the community and come up with another solution. Give yourself the time to do so. Thank you.
Next three, Matthew Smith, Ken Field. And then we have Zach and Sarah Sparks signed up on one line. I don't know if they are speaking separately or if it'll be a joint presentation. Matthew Smith, Ken Field.
Hello, um, good evening, members of the board. Thank you for your time and, uh, it's been a pleasure to speak for, for comments today. My name is Matthew Smith and I live in the, uh, Rockremen area for the last two years. I've often visited the library with my two children. Rather than speaking with the valuable services that the Rockremen Library provides, I'd rather like to address the risks of it of the board trustee's statement if it falls through with this decision. This board has failed to seek additional funding sources and refused to accept a reduction in rents. Furthermore, it has not applied a needs, usage, or efficiency-based approach assessment in making its decision. As reflected by many people providing comments today. This decision may open the board up to costly additional oversight in the future to, uh, to the detriment of the entire library district. Apparently, you might be facing possible cost litigation as well, as proposed by some other people that have made comments today. I urge the board to delay finalizing this decision so may provide additional justification for closing the Rockremen Bridge in order to achieve a sound financial posture, which I agree is necessary for this board. Any action short of providing further justification demonstrates either inadequate assessment process, short-sightedness, or misalignment of values with the community. Maybe it was a strategic decision to bring advocates together in order to help you to solve this problem. I hope that was the case. In any case, the decision thus far has increased the people's attention and scrutiny over the board and may result in additional cost oversight and regulatory processes in the future. None of this, none of the possible causes for this quick decision reflect positively on board members that voted so close, that voted to close the library. And the lack of transparency in this process is an example of why public trust has eroded in far too many government institutions. I think closing the Rockremen branch so quickly is a mistake, but the error is human. And it is not too late to correct this mistake. Please let us understand this course of action further so that we may regain our trust in this board trustees. If you do not make this decision in a justifiable way, your efforts to achieve a sound financial position will only become more difficult in the future. Delaying the closure of the Rockremen Library for at least one more year is in the board's best interest. Thank you for your time to consider my comments.
Just because I didn't repeat it, I will say again, Zach and Sarah Sparks, um, if you're still here, Brittany Widrow, and Mo, and this starts with an R, and I cannot make out the rest of it. I apologize, Mo. But if Mo, if you are still here, Brittany Widrow, Zach and Sarah Sparks, Aubrey Ranson, Bernadette Dahl, Rachel Bolenbach.
Well, my name is, um, Bernadette Dahl. Thank you guys for having this meeting and listening to our voices. I have a Bachelor's of Arts in Criminal Justice and I have a Bachelor's of Arts in Spanish. And growing up, the library, I did not grow up in Colorado Springs. I grew up in the Denver Metro area. And I was not as fortunate as other children. Uh, my mom brought me to the library a lot and the library was more than just books. It was a physical space. Um, even the games on the computers were very educational. Um, I would not have kept up with my peers in computers if I did not have access to those things. In high school, I rode my bike to the library and I got additional resources there. In college, I did not go to college with a computer. I had to use the computer on campus. So closing our libraries does affect access. And, um, it, a lot of people have come here saying that it does affect schools and stuff, so I think that it will affect our most vulnerable. So the library is more than just books. It is a physical space. And the most important thing that I have learned from my criminal justice degree is that idle hands are the devil's workshop. And so if we do not have community resources for our youth, for the elderly, and for other people in our community, then it, um, comes out in other ways that are not good. And, um, I do not think that it is a good decision to close this library. I come to the East Library often, actually. And, um, I am a stay-at-home mom and it is still a great resource for us. Um, now that I'm more fortunate these days, I can afford my own books and I have nice computers at home. But it is still great to get out of the house with my child. And she still learns a lot here. I do not believe that the population, um, here can absorb even more people because we are already very busy. And I just want you guys to reconsider closing more libraries, especially in the south, um, where there are more disadvantaged communities. Thank you guys for listening.
Good evening. Oh, it's, oh, this is hard. Yeah, the squat. My tired face honors your tired faces. Um, I have blankets to buy after this um, for our students. My name is Aubrey Ranson. I'm a resident of Rockremen. Rockremen Library is my library. It's my family's library and it's a resource I rely on professionally. I serve as the homeless education liaison in Academy District Twenty. I'll repeat that. I am the homeless education liaison in Academy District Twenty. We have the second highest population of homeless students in the city of Colorado Springs. In particular, the west side of our city and our district boundary is the most impacted by our students who are homeless. As an organization, Pike's Peak Library District has a tremendous impact on our babies, on our infants, on our toddlers, and on our children who are experiencing homelessness. This important community space allows our youth the opportunity to grow developmentally. Picture the hotels on the I-25 corridor from Interclust South. They are full of families experiencing homelessness. These babies, these children, they don't have space to crawl for tummy time, to grow developmentally, and the library provides that space. Others have spoken about the rite of passage for Eagleview students to walk to the library. I don't know why Safeway's not here because they're gonna be really impacted. The statistics are very clear. The three to six PM hours are dangerous for youth when they don't have places to go. So this closing struck me as a little weird because this is a community that doesn't have public transportation. I don't understand why we haven't initiated conversations with Mountain Metro if we needed to make a transition of services. But this lack of transportation in Rockremen, if you want us to access other resources, we have to have methodologies to do that, and that's not fair. So as a lifelong resident of Colorado Springs, I grew up in Black Forest. I remember calendaring the once-a-month access to the mobile, uh, library that would come out. And I just wanna believe that our small, large town or our large-small town is a community. I wanna name what's happening here. We have a breakdown in our community. We've romanticized our leaders. We've lost accountability for our actions. However, the transformation of community is linguistic. This conversation is essential for transformation. I want a community, a community of possibilities, not of problems. We exist, you exist as a board, for the sake of driving belonging, for the gifts and the generosity and the accountability of our citizens. I don't want our community defined by problems, by our isolation, or by the penchant for retribution. Can I finish one more sentence? We have the capacity, expertise, programs, leaders, regulations, and wealth required and required to end this unnecessary suffering and create an alternative future. Thank you.
I believe we have reached the final three. I double-checked the list. I believe Young Noah is the only one who accidentally missed. Please let me know while these three are speaking if you believe you signed up. And I'll double-check the list, so apologies if that is the case. So our final three, I believe, Jerel Barrientos, Frank Bernhard, and Sarah Goobler. Number two, Jerel. You're in line, what's that? Are you okay with this gentleman taking Jerel's place?
Go ahead.
Feel free. Yes.
So my name is George Myers. My name is George Myers. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Um, I was in line earlier and had some conversations with many people waiting outside to get in to actually have opportunity to see you guys and speak.
Can we speak a little louder?
I apologize. So as part of being in line with, um, some of these other individuals, I heard some of the stories. One of the stories was about how this space is not just used as a library space. It's used as a community center. It's also used as a place for careers, for education. Um, one of the people I talked to in line have used it as part of his opportunity to find a job here in Colorado Springs after first moving here. So in that note, I wanna read a quick quote. "I'm very excited to serve on the PPLD Board of Trustees. I developed my career through the literary resources available and I'm looking forward to ensuring these opportunities maintain their availability to each of our community members." That's a direct quote from Mr. Aaron Salt. So again, this is a community member that spoke to me about the very same things you used your library resources for in the past. So speaking to you directly and to some of the other board members who've been in education. We have a D-twenty, I think, volunteer of the year. We have a D-twenty previous substitute teacher. These are, um, schools that are within that library walking distance. I would look back and please look at your experiences with the library, with the schools, your experiences using it as a career builder, and understand what this library means to all the individuals in our community.
Okay, I hope this works. I'll dip in my knees. I'm, I'm Carla Powers. And, um, I'm the person who has organized Save Rockremen Library. I am just a regular person. I know some people whose kids have gone to the same school that I used to work at. And, um, I know people who've been in our neighborhood. I see people here. They have friends in our neighborhood, have family in our neighborhood. You guys are part of our community. Please don't shut us out. Please, let's be a community together. Uh, as I should tell you that I've served at the Pike's Peak Library for twelve years. Um, I'm part of this continually growing northwest part of Colorado Springs. We're not shrinking. We're still growing over here. We love our library. We, today, strangely enough, not very strangely, we had two hundred people outside. Plus, we packed a hundred and sixty in here. Three hundred and sixty total, plus, I didn't count how many was. Well, anyway, it. Okay, so anyway, you see, there's a large amount of people here. Um, this doesn't count the seniors that don't have access to computers. This doesn't count the people that are homeless in our community. This doesn't count the people that aren't able to join this meeting because it's at East Library instead of at our library. So anyway, I wanna say that we've only been Save Rockremen Library for three and a half weeks. And in that time, our website has been viewed by over four thousand people. We've raised over, I, I just looked on my computer in this meeting, so the actual number is fifty, over fifty-eight thousand in pledges to date, three and a half weeks. You don't, okay, let's see. I'm sorry. I, I just wanted to straighten up one little thing here. Um, I know there's been some talk about like all the children's coming. Oh, my gosh. I'm so, I'm good at this. This is why everybody, everybody else is speaking. I'm just helping to organize. But anyway, if you guys pass this around, you guys have access to this, but this is the child safety policy for Pike's Peak Library District. I just wanna make clear that you guys understand that out of that, the policy is that children eight and under must be directly supervised, supervised at all times by parent guardian, caregiver givers. If you're over, if you're nine and over, you don't need to have a parent there. We are a first, libraries are First Amendment protector. We respect what parents decide to do with how they want to raise their children, how they wanna care for their children. And if a parent decides that that's okay for their child to walk to the library with friends or ride their bicycles down with friends, we respect that and honor that. That's just how libraries work in general. So, um, I just wanted to straighten that out. I think that it's important that we work together. I'm sorry, I'm so bad at this. Okay, um, I just wanna ask you that as soon as possible that you vote to reverse your decision to renew the Rockremen Library lease for at least one year. I really think that we can work together on this, you guys. We've got all this community that's so willing to help you with a mill levy right now. If you run it like right now, we will help you. Okay? If you don't do it now, we've all gone to fuck. Because I, I, you guys see how frustrated people are. We're trying to be responsible for our responses here and it's still coming out as frustration tonight. So please, let's do this now while we still can work together. Let's do this.
We'll see if I can project my voice enough to account for the microphone or the sound system. My name's Frank Bernhardt. I'm a thirty-one-year resident of, yes, the Rockremen neighborhood, or that northwest quadrant of the city. I've used that library thirty-one years. I got my job here after a military career using that library. My kids use that library. I take my grandkids to that library. But it's more than the books. People are absolutely right. And first of all, by the way, let me thank the East uh library staff for hosting us in this meeting. And Board of Trustees, I thank you for willing to serve. It's, I know it's been a tough night. We'll try to, I came here with all the facts and figures, because I'm an engineer, and I've been a public administrator for forty years and uh was able to analyze budgets and as a facility manager, manager was able to take apart the master plan and look at it. You don't need to hear about that. I think you've heard from a community that is asking you to give them a chance to save a part of the community instead of letting it implode. I don't know how many of you Board of Trustees have actually been in the Rockremen Library. I suspect by now perhaps all of you have been. If not, you should. Although it's a bit stripped down now, as it's been getting ready to close. But it's part of our community. It is the heart and soul of that northwest quadrant. As I worked in a school district, we counted on using the libraries. And uh you know, it's kind of a shame that one of these meetings wasn't held in that area. You might not have had to have this many people come to a meeting now, but you know what? I am proud of my neighbors. Would they have stuck this out to do this, to bring to your attention what a disastrous decision that would be? Do they, do you need another year to look at it? Absolutely, without a doubt. Are we ready to help you? Absolutely, without a doubt. Don't make a disastrous decision. Stay. Thank you.
Sarah Hoogler. You have a resource today that you did not realize that you had when you made this hard decision. You have citizens ready to donate their time, talent, and treasure. Help us help you. You do not have to be the board who closes a library. We see that you are volunteers who love the library, and I am certain that this decision brought you no joy. If you perceived any of our responses as nasty, please forgive us and view the frustration that bubbled over as evidence of our commitment to our library. The PPLD organizational chart places citizens of PPLD above the Board of Trustees, and we want to do our part. We are offering you money. Fifty-six thousand dollars has been raised in one month. We are offering you volunteer time in six hours today. We received pledges for a total of ninety-three hours of volunteer support for the next year. We are offering you professional support into solving PPLD's future budgeting needs. We are not advocating for PPLD to continue deficit spending. We are asking you to use the existing budget to prioritize access over new programs. Rockremen and a future branch on powers are not mutually exclusive. If PPLD will prioritize strategically placed locations instead of fewer fancier libraries. A study like the Facilities Master Plan can only offer conclusions based on its inputs. The inputs into the Facility Master's Plan neglected to include some key resources, priorities, and analyses. Focusing on only one metric, the highest leased space, is not a robust way to handle data. The cluster of Penrose, Old Colorado City, and Cheyenne are within three and a half miles of each other, not the six miles of Rockrem- from Rockremen to Eastern Twenty-One C. Penrose's operating cost per item in circulation is outrageously high. Community branch Rockremen has a higher circulation rate than flagship Penrose, because nobody wants to go to that expensive property due to its surroundings. There are more effective ways to free up capital than closing Rockremen. Be the board member who is willing to have faith in our community to follow through on the resources we are offering today. It takes three trustees to call a special meeting with an agenda for revote and four trustees to renew the lease. Give us the opportunity to help you achieve all your goals instead of settling for a hard decision that deviates from your primary vision of access. Take a chance on us. We're not going away, and you don't have to be the donor.
I believe this has concluded all the uh citizens' comments, but we will move into our reports on our agenda. Governance Committee. Anything to report?
We, in governance, discussed some procedural uh issues. I forgot what else we did, I'm sorry. We, we did a quick look at the bylaws, um discussed.
Laura cannot hear, so she'll.
Uh, let's see, we, we discussed the procedural matters, um as well as uh push review the, some bylaws as well as um board positions for next year and uh CEO assessments.
Okay. Okay, Internal Affairs.
I was told it's on. Uh, Internal Affairs met, uh, we met twice. We had our initial meeting early in the month, uh, where we discussed. Couple of the resolutions that we deciding on, they went in meetings, brought forth by Randy. And then, oh, we had a session, quick session yesterday to discuss some of the monument lease options, which uh we discussed during the other session, so. That's how we handle that.
Public Affairs.
We didn't need.
Okay, uh, um, Liaison, uh, Commissioner Geitner, I don't know if anybody else. Oh, I don't see her.
Good evening. Um, I don't really have a whole lot to discuss. I just wanna thank this board for your tremendous service to our community. Um, as you probably know, yesterday we got a visit from many of these lovely folks um at our Board of County Commissioners meeting uh as well and heard a lot of these same comments, so uh, none of them were, I don't think any of them were repeat or uh new comments. They were mostly repeat comments of the ones that we heard yesterday. Um, I just wanna reiterate my support for the decision that you all have made um as a liaison. I think the longest-running liaison at this point for the last four years, most of you know, maybe not all the public knows, um that from the beginning, and some of you who were here, I was very passionate about this library making sure that it reflected our community as well as making sure that it was financially sound. Um and I think you guys have done a tremendous job of working with a difficult situation. Um and, and I, I, I fully support your, the decisions that you're making. I know that it's very difficult for the community. Um I shared in, 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 in some, some, I really appreciate the very nice individuals who understand that we can agree to disagree on things. Thank you for the hug. Um, that was a really nice uh gesture um from one of the members who came up and said those things. I understand, and so I will give grace for people as it was suggested, uh, that are, that are feeling very emotional about this decision. Um, but I, I, I said it yesterday in my meeting, and I will continue to say it. I know that each of you cares deeply about this library, um, and all the libraries in our system. I told a story yesterday that some people didn't like. I'm gonna tell it again. Um um, I, I just really hate when people shout out in their room. Um I read a book.
Wow, excuse me, let's uh, let's have some decorum here.
Thank you. Um, I read a book once that was related to school boards. Um, many folks may not know, some of you do know, uh, I also founded a charter school, and I'm very passionate about education and kids. In fact, I mentioned I was a homeschool mom. I got a nice email of someone saying that I was not a homeschool mother and questioned my, my thirteen years. So if you're in the room and you were wondering, yes, I'm a legitimate homeschool mother of thirteen years. Um but the story is this, that there was a school board member who was also a uh mentor for like a boys and girls type program. And he had been mentoring this child for a very long time, and one day went to pick him up at school. And when he picked it, this boy up at school and he got into the car, the boy was very downtrodden. And the school board member said, hey, what's going on? And he said, I can't take an AP class I wanted to take. And the school board member said, I, that can't be true. I am a school board member. I made sure every kid can take an AP class. And the student quite frankly said, you know, genius, that was only if there's enough enrollment at the school. And the school board member remembered in that instant that a couple of years ago, they had to make some hard choices with underperforming in terms of enrollment schools in the district. And because they did not make the sound fiscal decision to close some of the schools and make sure the opportunities were there for those students, the student could not take the AP class. And I tell the story because at the end of the day, it's easy to see what's directly in front of you. We've heard the heartfelt stories of people who are concerned about what they're going to miss out on. But I know the decision that you all have to make includes all of the children, all of the families who are not here, and the potential impacts that you have all had to take into account as the total picture of what is happening in this library district. Um
People, I, as patrons, and as much as you say you love library, I believe some of you were not interrupted when you spoke, and we should give the same respect to our commissioner here.
So regardless of it being a perfect analogy or not, the reality is when we have to make decisions, there are always unintended consequences. There are always things that we don't necessarily perceive. Making tough decisions in the best interest of our community, I think, is very important, and I applaud you all for, for making the very best decisions based on all of the information um that I know you've had. I also know, and I said this at our last meeting, but I know there are other uh folks here today as well. I, I think it's great that there are so many people who are willing to help the library out, and I'm sure that you are as well. I hope that they do stay and help regardless of um the situation, because I think that, that does demonstrate a love for libraries regardless of, of um the outcome of Rockremen. And I think that it's, it's an important, um it's an important step regardless of the library, but an MLO, as you all know and have heard from me, is not a viable option. It is not a viable option in this county. Um, there may be several people, I've been working in this space for, gosh, about nine years now. The county went to the ballot, um, I think two years ago now, uh, to ask for a retention, and it was overwhelmingly defeated. That was for roads, which is the most popular thing when we look at what ballot initiatives have passed. Um, this is not the same as Colorado Springs. There's an entire other piece of El Paso County that feels very differently. I've watched uh MLO requests from our G forty-nine school district go down seventy percent or more. Uh, when we look at this, uh, I know that there were some questions about how much it costs. I heard it being compared to D twenty. We're talking about the entire county. I can attest to the fact that it gets much more expensive than that. I would hate to see you all uh go down that road of wasting a half million dollars on something that uh quite frankly is, is, is not a, a viable option. And I think if you talk to folks who've worked truly in this space, they would give you that same advice. Um, but regardless, I think that uh in a tough situation, I am proud of each and every one of you, and I want you to know that, and I'm here and will. I've been here for four years. I'll be here for four more, uh, God willing, and uh, and will be here to support what I know are your very best efforts at caring for this library system.
Uh, good evening. I know we've been listening to people for four hours, and that's exhausting. Um, it really is. So I appreciate that, and uh, and thank you for listening to me for just a few more minutes. Point of order, I would say, when liaisons speak, there is no three-minute clock. And Commissioner Geitner had, had every, you know, right to speak for as long as she needed to speak, um, and deserved that respect to be heard as I hope I will have as well. So as one of the uh nine city council members, and, and I happen to be a liaison, and as one of the fourteen elected officials with the responsibility for appointing each of you, I come to you this evening with a deep appreciation for your role on the Board of Trustees. The El Paso County Board of Commissioners and Colorado Springs City Council have entrusted you with upholding the library's mission, financial health, and impact on the community. This is no small responsibility, and I honor the expertise and dedication that you bring to this important stewardship. Over the past uh five weeks since your decision, I've been navigating two challenging but essential goals. First, I have worked to really honor your leadership as a volunteer body entrusted with decentralizing control and fostering community collaboration. This can be a thankless role, and I empathize with the difficulty of balancing public expectations and organizational demands. Though perhaps not all communication has reflected the respect you deserve, I recognize that these intense emotions stem from a community deeply invested in the library, a testimony to the library's value and the work of this district for so, so many years. Second, I have actively listened to the voices of the Rockremen community, a group that is galvanized by their shared desire to preserve their local library, their thoughtful engagement demonstrated by research. Wow, do they know a lot. Respectful dialogue and clear articulation of concerns is a model of civic participation. I've read countless emails. I've tried to respond to all of them. I've not been able to, and that's actually saying something, because I usually do, and it has been more, I think, than any other um topic that we have, I've received in my four years on city council. I've had personal conversations, and I've witnessed their resolve. You have witnessed, we've all witnessed their resolve to contribute constructively to this conversation. So I have a call to you, a call to collaboration. I really encourage this board to seize this moment as an opportunity to innovate and forge a new path of collaboration. Imagine a future where this challenge actually serves as a template for navigating similar situations in the future, creating a proactive model for community engagement, just what libraries are about. Your decision here can resolve this immediate issue and strengthen trust and partnership with this community, paving the way for lasting positive outcomes, and not just for the Rockremen Library, but for the Pike's Peak Library District going into the future. I really look forward to the work session on Monday where we can explore some solutions together. Initially, you might remember, I was not supportive of you coming to city council, because that was not the place to have the conversation. Initially, you might remember I was not supportive of you coming to city council because that was not the place to have the conversation. I invited you and I encouraged you to have a meeting where you would meet with these folks and and answer their questions and give them the answers that they've been asking for. But you didn't, you didn't make that choice. So I look forward to that meeting. Public educational spaces like libraries are invaluable for enhancing neighborhoods and quality of life. The possibility of losing Rockman Library should prompt us to think creatively about preserving and evolving these vital resources. Libraries, as you have been hearing, they're a pillar of community thriving. You know this. You chose to serve on this board. They've always been spaces of belonging and personal growth and community connection. Far from being relics of the past, they adapt constantly to meeting the evolving needs of people they serve. The Pike's Peak Library District mission and vision reflect this, emphasizing to res- emphasizing access to resources, personal and community thriving and fostering meaningful connections. By the way, this morning, we were in a public safety summit with our mayor and um and law enforcement and elected officials and City of Aurora, talking about the challenge we're facing juvenile crime in this city. Kids who are taking cars and smashing into buildings and and stealing. I heard a fourteen-year-old here tonight say, you know, basically it sounded like she she misses the 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 bus so she can go to the library. These are important spaces for our youth and our city right now. This situation aligns with the library's strategic plan goals such as improvising physical and virtual spaces, strengthening community connections and enhancing communications. These aspirations call us to navigate challenges with care and creativity, ensuring decisions reflect fiscal responsibility and the library's broader mission. So some suggested guiding principles for you a- as you go forward. Recognize this community's passion as a signal of the library's profound impact. Harness this energy to build bridges and deepen mutual understanding. Take the time, and I know you have, to understand the financial and operational challenges behind this decision fully. But then be in conversation here and ask the unex- questions. What are the unexplored avenues to address lease disputes or repairs without closing the library? Fifty fifty-six, fifty-seven thousand dollars raised. Wow. Consider alternative solutions such as temporary partnerships or fight or new funding strategies that align with the library's mission and strengthen community trust. Lead decisively, balancing short-term constraints and long-term goals. Active listening and transparent communication will guide the way. Use this moment to set a precedence for proactive collaborative governance. Empower the community and trustees to co-create solutions, ensuring everyone feels. A vision for the future. This really is an opportunity to strengthen the governance model through active collaboration with the county commission and city council. A unilateral deci- uh a unilateral solution risks setting unprecedented unintended precedents. But a shared commitment to resolving these issues through dialogue will build more resilience and a united community. If challenges persist, stronger interventions can be revisive. However, by prioritizing engagement and trust building now, we set the stage for meaningful progress. My closing thoughts. Please let this moment serve as a reminder of why libraries exist. To connect, to inspire. Wow, this has been so inspirational. And to empower. Together we can ensure that this legacy continues, creating a future where thriving libraries anchor thriving communities. Thank you all for your service, your leadership and your commitment to fostering the best connections and outcomes for all. I finally want to ask you all a question. As someone who has voted on many, many things, how how do we change our minds? How does that happen? One of the ways is we get new data. You've got a bunch of new data that's come in this last five weeks. Bunch of new data. How do we change our hearts? Sometimes we make a decision and we feel so committed to it because we're proud of it and we've worked so hard on it and we're certain it's the right thing to do. And then our our, you know, our where's our humility to say, wow, maybe there's new information to consider. Maybe there's something else for us to explore here. And all they're asking for is a year, a year, just one year, to take those kinds of actions, to be leaders for this community. So what do you have to lose by deciding to extend one year? Really, really, what do you have to lose? Really ask you to think about that. What do you have to lose? And what do you or we as a community have to lose by you deciding not to extend? I think there's a lot to lose. You've been hearing that tonight. I don't know that I particularly said anything new. I'm just really inviting you as a Board of Trustees to reflect, to allow yourself to change your mind, to revisit this decision, to make a motion, to have, you know, have a special meeting. Um, this is, this is big and I don't think they're going anywhere. I really don't. And 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 it's not just them. I mean, this is the community. There's such a deep love. For the like, this is a third rail. I think somebody said it earlier. This touched a third rail. Libraries are the heart of the democracy of the United States of America. So, thank you. Oh, really. I I genuinely, I respect you. I appreciate you. This is not easy service. I know it's not. I have spent my hours listening to people and listening and listening and listening. But I do appreciate you and I really, really hope you will reconsider. Give it a year and use this as an opportunity for the long-term future of the Pike's Peak Library District. Thank you.
Comment? Any other faculty have any comments?
I just want to say, thank you all for being here and sticking around for several hours. I know it wasn't easy.
Tap the bottom of that so the light turns green.
That's so funny because my wife tells me I'm always too loud. Um, so I was saying thank you for being here. Um, I do appreciate everybody sticking around uh for several hours. Um, and um I I do appreciate all of your comments. Um, I don't know if anybody else wants to say anything, but that's all I really want to say.
Yeah, I want to say uh thank you to everyone who made their voices heard and I hope that regardless of uh where things they have on the Rockman study will continue to uh stay involved and stay connected with PPLD. Um, I also just wanted to say, I did get a chance to go to the staff oh party uh last so I just wanted to say uh that was a great time getting back a little bit more and grateful for that time and grateful for uh just learning more about what each of you does. So thanks uh for chatting those of you that we've had to talk uh during that event. So.
I too want to thank everybody for coming um and for the passion that you guys have all shown for the library. Must say as a resident of Rockman, I'm not surprised. Uh your organizing ability and your your passion for speaking out for what you believe. So um, it's been a long night for us and it's been a long night for you. And I know that you've pulled time away from your families and work and supervising homework and all of those fun things. So um just know that that you're heard and um thank you for your.
Um, I also want to thank everyone for being here tonight. I did constructively listen. I want to say that a few people brought that term up and I wanted to let you know that I was listening, actively listening, I think people said. Um, I wish I had more to say right now, but it is well past my normal bedtime. So my brain is a little mush. But um thank you all so much for getting up and coming out tonight and we appreciate everything that you're here for.
Thank you all for being here. I don't have anything else to add. I understand the passion and appreciate to seeing the community come together. Um, as Aaron said, we're listening to everything. It's, we're not just bypassing, but I appreciate all of you coming to spend your time here with us this evening and the rest of it gets really boring from here. So if you wanted to go home, you're welcome to.
I would also like to say thank you for your time here with us. Uh, I also invite you to continue staying engaged. And one way to stay engaged is to follow the budget and how it looks, our meetings that are online, or please come and attend. Uh, you can come and sit and listen to, as Aaron says, sometimes it gets very boring. But uh we invite you to come and I do understand your passion. Uh, and I have actively listened to everyone. I have read every email. I may not have responded to every email, but I have read all of them. Uh, so just be be cognizant of the fact and give us grace as we work through these hard decisions. So thank you very much and now we'll continue the rest of our meeting.
Dora?
Madam President, could you allow member of the public thirty seconds since you gave other people a good ten minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, go. Who uh who uh, did you need another moment or?
Ma'am, I'm just a citizen that pays taxes, that complete, that keeps your library going. And I've been sitting here a long time, but thank you for allowing me to talk. I know you can't vote on this issue because it's not been publicized. I understand that. But is anyone here willing to make a motion to set a meeting as soon as possible to vote on this? Anyone? Thank you.
Hey, Dora?
Angela's.
Yes, Angela?
Thank you. I just wanted to say again to everybody who came out tonight, thank you for coming out and for writing the emails. I hear you and I understand your pain and your sense of loss. And I just want to say I really do um hope you continue with your activism and in your support for LP PPLD. So I just, again, want to thank everybody for that.
Rita, are you ready for your report?
How about a motion?
Uh, yes. So, Dora, I don't want to take a lot of time. I just want to say that uh we've been busy, just like you have. We've updated our bylaws. We've updated our financial procedures for both the district and the branches. And so we're keeping sort of cle- we're still working on our budget for twenty twenty-five. But I'd also like to mention that for the book sale where we made, we broke a record once again in the amount of money we brought in. We had over seventy volunteers who worked the book sales. So I'm always impressed at the number of folks who come out to help us in events like this so that we can then funnel the money back to PPLD and the programs and the many things that you're trying to do. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Courtney, foundation report?
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and go on with my report. Thank you all. Yes, um, so I am very, very excited that my offer for our individual giving coordinator has been accepted. So I will not be by myself anymore for the first time in a year. Um. I really want to point out that even though I've been by myself in the foundation this last year, we have not actually decreased our efforts. I will admit that we have decreased some of our donor engagement, but our actual efforts in fundraising have not decreased. Um, so I'm pretty, pretty darn proud of that and excited that when I get that individual giving coordinator in there, uh she's coming with a whole background of skills and knowledge that I don't even have. So I'm very excited to get her in there, get her working and building up our our individual giving. Um, December twelfth, we are actually holding an open house at Kendra's Library from four to six uh in recruitment for foundation board members. We will have that information available on the website and through some of our social media. So I'd really encourage folks to um join us for that and learn a little bit more. Um, and I also want to again, thank you all. This has been such an incredibly challenging and positive way experience. Um, there's still a lot of work to do in the foundation. Um, we we just keep hitting walls. Um, I don't know. I don't think, again, I've said this so many times, I don't think it was nefarious. But there's no way to understand what previous people in finance and previous leadership in the foundation were doing. I have no paper trail or any idea of how they processed some of these endowments, things like that, that they did. And it's it's turning out to be a lot to untangle. So that is early twenty twenty-five. Really jumping into that. I know we've talked about it some before, uh but it's a much bigger problem than than what we had originally anticipated. Um, so I again, I'm just asking you and thanking you in advance for your grace as we as we navigate through that and also why I'm excited to have some help so we can we can dig in and really solve these problems. Um, finally, I was hoping that I wouldn't have to bring it up and there'd be a solution by now. Um, but this is kind of a big deal. Um, we always apply for bus passes through the city and we always hit the deadline. We did that this year. But there was somebody on their side that did not get our application submitted to the people that um they were supposed to. And we uh we do not have bus passes currently for some of our from for some of our um patrons. Um, and again, I have been working with the city and trying to find a solution to that because we were in our right. I have timestamped communications. Um, so just wanted to bring that to you and let you all know that that's been going on. So, any questions?
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, Dora. Thank you.
When did your help start, buddy?
December second. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, financial report.
Good evening, board. Good evening, board.
At the very bottom.
Very bottom. Okay. Thanks for all the help. Uh, so as you can see, um our revenue um is actually higher in the property tax line than when they're budgeted that is as I've talked about before is due to uh uh funds that came in from the state and and we were going to uh, you all were gonna vote on something tonight in regards to that, but um had to move that to next year because of some um information that we laid out for that resolution we've put out. Uh, but if you take that out of the equation, um, we're basically running uh right where we should be on our taxes, which is not uncommon because of the way it gets submitted with the certification at the beginning of the budget cycle. Um, our intergovernmental um activity, we we have most of that go through the foundation. And with um the struggles they've had in the foundation and the rotation of board members and personnel um, bouncing the money back to us um as the district has been slow. So I'm hoping to have some of those dollars show up um before the end of this month, if not. So I'm hoping to have some of those dollars show up um, before the end of this month, if not into December. And some of the things that were budgeted there will um, start showing up. Uh, our interest, um, as I've said before is, um it's, we've basically been collecting about five point two percent are long-term on investment account. But uh, as the economy gets a little better, hopefully, um, I think bond rates are, are gonna actually come down. Um, and so I'm, I'm being optimistic when I put in a, a little uh, not optimistic. Pulling back a little bit on, on what these actual numbers are coming in due to, I have no idea what's going to happen. Um, it's been coming through this way, but I really don't expect that to continue. So um, I do um, put out a budget adjustment at the end of the year and that will be happening uh, next board meeting. So differences between the actual budget that are solid, um, we'll go into that and so the interest income number budget would get adjusted. Our expenses, um, revenue is pretty much, um, at least for property taxes is gonna slow down to a trickle. And uh, our expenses will continue somewhere between two point six and three million per month. So we have two more months. And spending on capital, um I think we've got uh, again, some things sitting over in conferences that aren't showing up here because it's not an actual. And also changes in, in that department as far as um, leadership and whatnot. So we're we're dealing with uh, keeping projects going forward. General fund, as you know, um, all of the rest of the funds that I've talked about is all rolled up into PPLD as a whole. Uh, probably won't spend a whole lot more time on these individually. Our expenses overall are, are below what we budgeted. There's been a conscious effort on people's parts to to really uh, watch what they're spending and that generally sits after ten months starts to accumulate. And also a large part of this is our hiring has been a challenge. I keep bringing that up. Uh, it's been a challenge since COVID. We are actively seeking people. We have job fair. We talked about that earlier. And we have people who are more than qualified to take positions. We're offering jobs and they're rejecting our offers because we're not paying enough. Um, so that's really disappointing for everybody. You go all that effort and then, you know, including the applicant. For them to have to say in the end, I can't accept your job because you're not paying enough. So um, part of the favorable numbers here is coming from a vacancy pool, which is you know, we have budgeted jobs and, and they've been attempting for a really long time, those jobs. And so we're not eliminating the jobs because we can't fill them. We're gonna keep trying. At some point, um, we may have to pull back, but that's really the last option because it means cutting services. And, and we're not really interested in doing that. We're trying to bring more people in. The capital investment fund, uh, the budget number that we started with was uh, about two point three million. And for unfinished projects from the previous year that rolled over and created a budget number of five point five. And uh, so that's kind of a common thing we have, we've had happen. So I am sure that's something that'll be targeted a little bit more by the current administration there. Self-insurance, uh, that one's actually running along, um, very close to budget. Unbalanced, we don't have a huge deficit or surplus. And um, even though we've had increases in the insurance, just like everybody else. Our claims so far stayed within what we thought would happen. And our budget director, reconciliation fee, um, I'll be adding some of uh, things we're talking about later um, to the sheet, but that's basically giving you guys a, a running total of what's, what's going through as a reconciliation item. Anybody got any questions?
Any questions? Anyone have any questions?
Um, thank you.
Thank you. Public services, Tammy.
Okay, real quick, in public services, um, adult education reported that the, we had a recent food industry training graduate go through the shovel-ready program and was hired as the manager of Opus Cafe, which is at the El Paso County Film. So exciting news there. I really want to take just a second to uh, thank collection management, particularly Colleen Medling for coordinating a lot of behind-the-scenes effort as we go through our um, integrated library system, uh, RFP and the demonstrations. That was eight full days of four vendor demonstrations. So was a lot of work involved in them. She really did a great job coordinating that. Regional history and genealogy hosted uh, spooky stacks in the Carnegie part of the Penrose Library. We had a hundred and seventeen individuals come through that area those two days and and was a huge success. And then finally, uh, Penrose Library hosted their last community exchange for the year. Um, that involved um, multiple vendors from the c- community, including Department of Health and Human Services, the El Paso County Pretrial Services, and we assisted through that ninety-one patrons.
Questions about the rest of the report? How about support services? Any questions on any of those reports or? But do you want to report on anything, Heather?
Uh, no, just if anybody has any questions on your purposes, because I would like to answer those.
I did notice the graph on uh, what's happening at each of the libraries, how things are changing uh, and reprimanding uh, patrons, uh, those incidents are that's really good. I, I, I was really impressed with the graph. Especially at Penrose, since we did that safety work. And I also want to thank uh, um, I don't know if Denise is here. I know she's had lots of communication going on. I am, thank you and I appreciate you. Okay, uh, CEO report.
Uh, so um, the board, as I mentioned before during our uh, work session, that we have about fifty-six vacant positions and we'd be struggling to hire. We had several uh, positions that uh, un- unfortunately applicants did not accept those positions because of the pay and they, they just, you know, they, um, our competitors took them. So uh, but as also I mentioned, uh, Alice, Timothy Allen, I'm sorry, just like I'm sorry, Timothy. I just mixed your last and first name. Timothy was not at the budget session because he was at a meeting with our salary study consultant. And at this point, we hope that we will have some numbers soon. Uh, as uh, I mentioned before, that we know, um, that we need to um, invest in our staff and adjust our pay as well. So I want to thank Timothy and his team for working on that and gathering all this data. Um, I also would like to take this opportunity and thank Natalie Johnson, uh, the executive director of MAC for partnering with us for several years while we were uh, called located at MAC. But also um, Manny Two Springs Library, um, is almost, actually it's finished. We're just waiting for some official documents to get clearance. And I want to also thank Michael Brethner, who is now not, um, as you know, we always look at different positions to ensure that we have efficiencies. And we combined uh, facilities, uh, position and their security uh, position together. And now that's so Michael Brethner, I think he has some regrets at this point. He's been extremely busy. Um, but uh, our hope is that we'll be able to move in the Manny Two Springs Carnegie Library soon. And we're discussing some details regarding the grand opening. That's the hope is sometime uh, the first week of February, even though our hope was earlier. Um, and it's not, it, it won't happen. But again, I would like to thank the city of Manny Two Springs Library, uh, Matt Manny Two Springs and also Natalie Johnson, Johnson for working with us for so many years. Also, the new owner of uh, Ruth Holly Library Branch, they're replacing the roof. Um, and uh, again, it's that they decided the date when they're going to do that. We're extremely grateful for them that they're taking that uh, on, um, and they're making it happen. So Ruth Holly Library will be Michael about closed for about a week, right? Uh, one week uh, in December. And again, uh, as you know, Scott, you mentioned several times before that we had a lot of issues there. And uh, I, it will be addressed at this point. And uh, also, um, um, the superintendent of District Eleven and I will be having a meeting to discuss how to uh, improve, not improve, actually strengthen our partnership as Pike's Peak Library District and District Eleven. And uh, again, I want to take this opportunity and thank uh, Denise Abbott especially. Uh, she did have to cancel her vacation uh, to be available. And many thanks, um, Denise. And of course, I would like to thank everyone, I Pike's Peak Library District. And of course, uh, this is the beauty of the United States of America. People have this freedom. They can express themselves freely. And uh, I appreciate that. Uh, and I appreciate um, that uh, all of us have that opportunity as citizens. So do you have any questions, um, Madam President, the board trustees?
Oh, thank you for your report. Uh, consent items, was, were there any questions on the minutes? If not, the, okay, we move forward. We have unfinished business. Oh, Jeriah, are you ready? Are you ready? For the one Bella, we do have a decision for tonight.
Hello, board. How are you this evening? Yeah, yeah. Um, I, we don't have an extra presentation for you. I'm not gonna make you sit through, sit through that. Um, just a couple of things to point out. There's, this is really a two-vote item. There's the one vote of the creation of the URA. And then the second vote is, in order for that creation to happen, we have to shift it from the Southwest Downtown URA, which is expiring in two years to put it into the One Vila URA. We had mentioned, I think, last go, uh, which was, geez, about a month ago. Um, this project we built out to, so you receive half the revenue on. So twenty, it's roughly about twenty-six grand a year, uh, extra revenue to the library. If we were to build a different project, we are ballparking about eleven grand a year to the library. So even with the URA designation, the library makes more money out of this project. And other than that, we've, uh, our next go will be with city council on December tenth. Uh, we did get through the Board of County Commissioners just yesterday. Uh, and that is it. So we're happy to answer any questions that the board may have and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions? Um, is she, is she still up? Angela, you have any questions?
No, I mean, I, it's not really a question. I, you know, I think just for the record, I do have a I don't disagree with the way URA is done in the state. I do understand it has been improved from what it used to be in the past. And although I still have some heartburn with PPLD paying for infrastructure close to the tune of the rate of comparable to the city, I understand the, the hammer in the back pocket. And I know as a PPLD trustee, I have to do what is best uh, financially for the district. And that's my statement.
You, uh, got any questions? Anyone else on the board? Any questions? Well, uh, can someone uh, make a motion for the decisions that we need to vote on? For one Bella?
Yes, point of clarification. You said there were two things. Are we taking one vote for both items or are we taking two separate votes on this? Well, one voter, two, one vote.
One.
One vote for both. Yep. Just checking with the attorney.
So are you willing to make that motion?
I don't have the motion.
I move that the Pike's Peak Library District Board of Trustees approved the URA One Bella Project as presented. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none will take a vote. All those in favor of the motion for the URA? Not, not at this moment.
You say not at this moment. Is it only during citizen comment at one period?
Yeah.
So if I speak out in the locker room, I then can't speak on any other item?
No, that, we're now in session of our meeting.
Understood.
So uh, it's, yeah, that would have had to have been during uh, citizen comments. Because you could have spoken on the, okay? Okay. Can I call for the vote? All those in favor of the motion to accept uh, the One Bella decision, signify by saying aye? All those opposed signify by saying no. You said no. Okay, there, I have two no's, Scott and, did you say no? No? Okay, and uh, and Erin? Uh, okay, at this point, I guess you better do a roll call. Vote, because I don't have everybody's, uh, okay?
No.
Aaron Dunn?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Julie?
No.
Scott?
No.
Angela? Angela, are you there? Can you place your vote?
My button's not working. Sorry about that. I very grudgingly vote yes.
And, and I vote yes. Motion passes four to three. Motion passes. Thank you. Next, uh, under new business is the resolution. And somebody needs to read that. I don't even know where it is in my packet.
No, I think we can just make the motion as president.
Can we just make sure, okay, can I have somebody make a motion for the resolution for the twenty twenty-four current property tax issue?
Okay.
I move that the Pike's Peak Library District Board of Trustees approved the resolution to adjust the twenty twenty-four budgeted property tax revenue as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, I have a first and a second. Uh, any questions on that? Hearing none will call for the vote. All those in favor of the resolution to adjust the twenty twenty-four budget current property tax, signify by saying aye? Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. The motion passes. Uh, second is a res- resolution, uh, and I need a, also need a motion for that. That's the one, number three.
I move that Pike's Peak Library District Board of Trustees approved the resolution to re- portion of the twenty twenty-four budgeted mill levies for capital funds as presented.
Can I have a second? I have a first and a second. Uh, any discussion on that resolution? I think we had gone over it before. Uh, if not, I'm gonna call for the vote. If not, I'm gonna call for the vote. All those in favor of the resolution to reapportion to, I think I read that right, the 2024 budget mill levy set for capital funds, funds to capital funds, signify by saying aye? Anyone opposed? Same sign? Hearing none, the decision passes, the resolution passes. Anyone have anything they want to say before we, Board of Trustees, do you have anything to say before we leave?
We still have one more on the bottom.
No, that one didn't, then, that was something. Not hearing anyone have any questions or remarks from the board. We adjourn this meeting at nine forty-five.